Good evening, or good afternoon. Thank you for coming to the Brown Act training. I'd like to introduce Tom Brown, the city attorney. He's going to be presenting the workshop this evening.
Um, we, we need to do--
Oh, I'm sorry. And if I, and if I, if I mispronounce a name, forgive me. Mayor Galbraith?
Here.
Peter White?
Here.
Kroll? Absent. Doring? Absent. Pitts? Absent. Planning Commissioner Parker? Kisner?
Here.
Hile? Monette?
Here.
Sweeney?
Here.
Library trustee is Long?
Here.
Swan?
Here.
Lane? Dai?
Here.
McLean? Weber?
Here.
Wood?
Here.
Parks and Rec? Uh, members Cutler?
Here.
Oswald?
Here.
Summers? Finney?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Tree Committee member Ortega?
Here.
Caush?
Here.
Stotzberry? Smith Allen? Sustainability Committee members Patterson?
Here.
Smith? Troy? Vence? ATC members Pot? Henry? Scheideman? Clary? Multicultural Committee members Kisner?
Yes.
Hurtado? Brunkel? Liso? Castro? Right.
Everybody hear me? Is this working?
No.
Is this working now? Is it? Help? While we're getting started, who thinks we have a problem here just sitting here getting started? Do we have a legal meeting? Who thinks we do? And who thinks we don't? We don't have a city council meeting because we only have two members of the city council. I'm going to get into whether this is appropriate. I'm going to tell you at the outset, I'll give you a spoiler. It is appropriate. It is legal. We are not violating the Brown Act here today. And in fact, hopefully, we're going to do some good under the Brown Act. Not so much. Let me start at the, at the side. I was hoping to be kind of a dinner theater host and walk around. Um, I'm Tom Brown. Nice to see you all. I'm the city attorney. I'm, uh, I'm going to run through a training that we gave pretty much in the same format a couple of years, uh, back in 2012. I know, um, Peter and the mayor were, were here. Um, were any of the rest of you there for that? And Bobby and, yeah, Grace? Well, hi again. Um, what we're going to go through today is, um, is this outline the purpose? The bodies covered by the Brown Act? What is a meeting? Um, the Brown Act, uh, covers meetings of, of legislative bodies. Are you a legislative body? What does that mean? Agenda requirements, uh, public access to meetings, um, closed sessions? That's not going to affect most of you. Um, that's mainly something the city council will do, although the planning commission did one, um, late last year, I believe, for some litigation we had. Um, and legal challenges. What can you expect to happen if you violate the Brown Act? Going the wrong way. Quick quiz, true or false? The Brown Act was named as a dig by the legislature at former governor, uh, Pat Brown, who opposed sunshine laws? False. It was named after Ralph Brown, not Tom Brown. I'm not that old. Um, uh, after there had been a series of scandals in California over business being done behind closed doors, um, for a long period of time. Um, so, um, again, named after Ralph Brown. Applies to all state agencies. Is that right? No. The legislature exempted itself, the state legislature. Um, how do you like that? Applies only to meetings where action is taken. You can get together, you can talk about, about, um, the business, um, but as long as you don't take action, it's legal. What do you think? False. The Brown Act prohibits a meeting, um, where all you do is discuss or deliberate, even if you don't deliberate. If you just discuss something that falls within your jurisdiction, you have violated the Brown Act. Um, it requires all agendas to be posted at least 72 hours in advance. No. Special meetings allow you, um, they, those, those agendas need only be posted, uh, 24 hours in advance. Um, requires city council meetings to be broadcast live? False. That's true. It does not require them to be broadcast. Requires the announcement of all agreements approved in closed session immediately after the closed session. Is that correct? Well, kinda sort of. Um, it depends. The Brown Act says that if the agreement, uh, comes to the city council in a closed session and only requires the city council, the city to sign it, then it's final and it need to be report, it needs to be reported immediately after the closed session. Otherwise, not so. And usually, or often, um, agreements, settlement agreements and the such, will come to the city council far before they're at a place where they only require a city signature. Um, the Brown Act allows residents of Los Angeles to sue St. Helena for alleged violations. Is that true or false?
It's true.
It's true. The Brown Act allows anybody to sue for a violation, whether they live here or not. Why am I having, this goes back and forth. What? Let me just see if I can do this. Okay. Um, before we get into it, let's talk a little bit about what, what the legislature said when they, when they enacted the Brown Act. What's it for? What's the legislative intent of the Brown Act? Public commissions, boards and councils, and other public agencies in the state exist to aid in the conduct of the people's business. It is the intent of the law that their actions be taken openly and that their deliberations be conducted openly. This is open government. The idea is that the people have a right to see how decisions are made, how the decisions of their government. Another part of this same statute in the, this same section of the Brown Act says, "The people do not yield their sovereignty to the agencies that serve them." We take that seriously in St. Helena. We, and, and most cities that I've been associated with take that obligation very seriously and try to conform themselves and conduct their business in compliance with that overarching principle. Um, again, the purpose of the public, of the Brown Act, to guarantee the public's right to attend and participate in meetings of local legislative bodies. Um, the basic rule of the Brown Act? All meetings of a legislative body. Focus on that term, meetings. What does that mean? Of a legislative body, of a local agency, shall be open and public, and all persons shall be permitted to attend any meeting, except as otherwise provided in the Brown Act. We're going to go through what those terms mean. Um, recognize that, well, the Brown Act, um, um, for years has generated controversy and litigation. And a few years ago, um, uh, open government advocates put a constitutional amendment on the ballot, and it passed. And the Brown Act now is constitutionally recognized in our state constitution. It was Proposition 59. It's now enshrined in California Constitution, Article One, Section Three. Uh, again, similar language as we saw previously. Um, I would say that was 10 years ago. I don't have the exact date for, for 59. And by the way, Bobby, I appreciate you raising, asking that question. I would encourage all of you to raise your hands, ask questions. I would, I think this works better if it's interactive and informal. If you feel like something, like I'm being too much of a talking head, or you don't get something, or you have a, you know, you disagree with something I'm saying, or whatever, please speak up. Um, I think this will be, um, more useful to all of us if you do. Um, what bodies are covered by the Brown Act? As I said, um, it's local agencies. All meetings of a legislative body of a local agency. Well, I'm just going to answer that for you. Cities are local agencies within the meaning of the Brown Act. So, that part of this, we, we satisfy. Yes? Well, we're going to get into that. Yeah. And I'm going to get, and that's a great question. And, and it's an important one, and it's not always that easy to answer. So, I'm going to get to that in a second. Yes?
If everyone speaks loud when they ask the question first, is there anything I ask to, that I can, that my--
Oh, and I, I immediately forgot what you, the advice that Cindy had asked, which is, I'm going to repeat the questions. Um, so, the question was, what is a meeting? And that's a term of art that's used in the Brown Act, and I'm going to get to that in, as I said, in a second. Um, what is a legislative body? That term really doesn't sound like what you do. Legislation is lawmaking. And, um, and except for, um, really, I mean, you, you, um, those of you who are not on the city council certainly contribute to the process of legislation. Um, you make recommendations to the city council about, um, what laws ought to be passed or maybe discarded. And, um, I think those of you who are planning commissioners do so on a much more, um, uh, close-up basis where, um, because of your, um, duties to adopt general plan or to make recommendations about the general plan and the zoning ordinance, you legislate more so than your colleagues do on other boards and commissions. But I think intuitively, it's hard for those of us, you know, all of us here to say, "We are legislative bodies outside of the city council." The answer to that is that you all are members of legislative bodies, as that has been interpreted. Um, or we wouldn't be giving you this, this, um, training and this workshop. The Brown Act applies to all of you. Um, it applies to city commissions and committees, whether permanent or temporary, decision-making or advisory, when they are created by a formal act, with some exceptions, um, of the, here of the city council. All of your boards and commissions, um, have been, were created by the city council, and so you are subject to the Brown Act as a matter of law. Um, a question that often comes up is, what about for a city council member who, um, has just been elected? Let's say it's the first Tuesday in November, and the election results are in, um, and that member, right after the election, uh, is pretty much, uh, announced and, and the results are clear, that member wants to start talking to his or her new colleagues on the city council. Does that, is that subject to the Brown Act? Yeah? Yeah? Um, we've, uh, the mayor and I had to discuss that early on, and, and it's, it's not intuitive, but the Brown Act, um, was changed in the 90s to make that explicit, that newly-elected council members become immediately subject to the Brown Act. The reason for that makes sense. There's good policy, um, sense behind that. Did I see a hand? Ad-hoc advisory committee exception. Many people have heard of ad-hoc advisory committees, and they assume that they are always exempt from the Brown Act. Um, first of all, the term ad-hoc, uh, is not used in the Brown Act. It's one that has, you know, folks have, it's a colloquialism that folks have assigned to these committees. Um, here's the rule. All committees established by legis, by a legislative body, typically here the city council, must comply with the Brown Act unless, and here are the exceptions. It's advisory, not decision-making, and it includes only board members, and it includes less than a quorum, and it does not have continuing subject matter jurisdiction, and it is not meeting on a fixed schedule set by the city council. In other words, assume that ad-hoc committees are subject. Now, typically, you're not, those of you except for the city council are not going to be forming ad-hoc committees. Um, that's not within your jurisdiction to do, as set by the municipal code. This is mostly for the city council, which from time to times, um, decides that it would be efficient and convenient to have, to create a subcommittee of the council, less than a quorum, typically that's two members, to, um, advise it on a discrete issue. That's okay, and not subject to the Brown Act, as long as it is something, it is a committee that is truly limited term, and it is truly task limited. In other words, it can't have a broad, ongoing, um, assignment to it, and it can't have an ongoing existence. Um, so, and this is what we call a true ad-hoc subcommittee. Um, but other than that, you have to assume that these, these, um, ad-hoc subcommittees are subject to the Brown Act. Case study. The city council appoints two council members to act as the recruitment committee. The committee works with staff on an ongoing basis to interview all management-level employees and make hiring recommendations to the council. Um, now, in our city, that's not going to be applicable because our manager makes most hiring decisions, but not all. Um, but let's just suspend disbelief for this one. The committee meets in private when needed. Does that violate the Brown Act? You're right. Why do you think?
Well, it's considered a legal basis.
Yeah? Yeah. It's, it's acting on an ongoing basis. It's, it's advising the council on an ongoing basis. That's not an ad-hoc committee. That's a standing committee. Sir?
Does your quorum apply to your that committee? Or, uh, since their members are in the county council?
The quorum principles don't apply to those ad-hoc committees. So, if the committee is, in other words, um, a quorum, uh, would require both members to be in attendance for there to be a meeting. If you've only, if you only have a subcommittee of two. Getting to your question. What's your name?
Terry.
Hey, Terry. Um, what is a meeting? A meeting includes a gathering of a, this is language from the Brown Act itself. A meeting includes a gather, any gathering of a majority of the members of a legislative body at the same time and location to hear, discuss, deliberate, or, can I just interrupt for a second? If I stand up straight, can you still hear me? And are you getting that? Okay. Because I don't want to be stooping the entire two hours or hour and a half. Um, to, at the same time and location, to hear, discuss, deliberate, or take action upon any item with his, which is within its subject matter jurisdiction. That's a meeting. And it looks kind of as clear as mud until I tell you about some of the exceptions that apply and that have been recognized as violations. But a meeting is a majority of the members of your board or committee, um, you're meeting at the same time and location to hear, discuss, deliberate, or take action. Any of those four things constitutes a meeting, when you're there with a, with a majority of the members. What kinds of meetings do we have? We have formal meetings. Regular, those can mean regular meetings, special meetings, emergency meetings, which I'll talk about in a bit, or teleconference meetings, which is a specialized kind of, uh, meeting that can happen that the Brown Act authorizes, um, when one of you is out of town, sometimes more. I'll talk about why that doesn't always work. Um, but then there are informal meetings, and these are the ones you need to pay attention to, that get, get legislative bodies, get boards and committees into trouble. Um, and they are called the daisy chain, the hub and spoke, and the email technology meetings. We're going to talk about those. Before I do, I'm going to talk about special meetings quickly. Um, a special meeting, the presiding officer or a majority of the legislative body may call a special meeting at any time. Uh, written notice for, to, um, to authorize a special meeting, written notice must be delivered at least 24 hours before the time of the meeting to each, uh, member of the board or committee. Typically, that's going to be the city council only, but there will be times that you may be called upon to have a special meeting, those of you not on the council. Um, notice has to be given to each of your members, um, within the 24, at least 24 hours in advance, and to each local newspaper of general circulation. I don't know if Jesse's here. Do we have anybody from, uh, the Star here? Um, uh, and any radio and TV station which has requested such notice in writing. And only the business set forth in the notice may be considered at that meeting. And I've cited the section of the government code that applies, that applies that rule. By the way, for those of you keeping score at home, the Brown Act is found in Government Code, Section 54950, et cetera, and beyond that. And this is one of the sections. Um, local agencies are prohibited from calling a special meeting about a local agency executive salary, um, salary schedule or fringe benefits. This was, uh, recent legislation that was enacted in the wake of the Bell, the City of Bell scandal. Any of you familiar with that? Um, there was some, you would think it was, it was legislation, or it would, these were principles that we would have been following anyway, um, but we weren't, or Bell wasn't anyway. You can have a meeting, um, by using teleconferencing. The Brown Act allows that. Meetings may be conducted by teleconferencing, um, any electronic, audio, or video connection, but only under the following circumstances. Uh, your body must approve a teleconference, and that has to happen by a majority. The agenda must be posted at all teleconference locations. Let's say you're out of town. You're staying at, at your sister's house, and you want a teleconference from your sister's guest bedroom. Can you do it? You can. Why?
You post it on the front door.
It's a, it's a--
What's that? And you have to allow the public, you have to be prepared to allow the public in. Now, as a practical matter, who's going to come if you're in Illinois, um, to a, to a posted meeting for St. Helena? But the Brown Act requires that, that notice be posted on the front door. What were you going to say? That was it? Yeah? Oh, Bobby.
I don't, um, public access, uh, has an ownership, so, and, and, uh--
Great question. Bobby was saying, can it be in your hotel room? Can it be on a cruise ship? How about if you're in your mo, mo, motorhome on the road? Can you do it then? Well, what do we think? Hotel room?
Yeah.
Yeah. Hotel room works. The best practice there, by the way, is don't do it in your hotel room. See if they've got a conference room downstairs or someplace. That's really more public-friendly, particularly if there is a real chance, let's say you're, you're in LA maybe and not Illinois, and there's some chance that someone from the public may want to come, or the Star wants to see whether we're doing it right. Think about that. But really, you could do it in your hotel room, as long as there is meaningful, um, noticing and posting for the public in that situation. What about the cruise ship? And I'll get to you in a second. Why not?
Because I know public can't--
The public can't get there. Public is, is not deemed to be able to swim out to that boat.
Even if it's docked?
Even if it's docked, you can't, can't be accessed by, by-- That's right. You can't get on the cruise ship. What about your moving car? No. You can't do that.
You don't need to have that, as long as, as long as, as a matter, by, as a matter of fact, the public can come into the home. What if, uh, what if it, the home is not, uh, disabled access? What if you, what if the disabled community can't get access? Is that accessible to the public? No.
So, that's, you know, as, at, at some point, it may come that one of you is going to want to try and teleconference. You've got a big, important meeting, and you have vacation plans, and you paid for those tickets a year in advance. You want to be able to do your job. Think about these, and I would suggest coordinate with, with Cindy and myself in advance to make sure we get it right and do it legally. All votes have to be taken by roll call. Here's the kicker. Um, yes?
Um, the question that I have is, if someone is going to teleconference, the place where the majority of people are meeting, does that also have to be put on the, on the four-hour notice that it is a teleconference?
Yes, it does. And that's a great question. The question was, does the notice itself have to give, I think what you're saying is, does the notice itself have to show where the, where the rest of the people not teleconferencing are meeting? And, and that, that, um, that notice, which is the, the meeting agenda-- And, and that, that, that notice, which is the, the meeting agenda, does have to show the regular place of the meeting as well as it has to refer to the teleconferencing. That's going to do. And the teleconference location. Yes. That's right. That's right. Here's, here's another kicker. At least a quorum of the members of the legislative body must participate in the teleconference within the geographical boundaries of the local agency. Means you can't have everybody teleconferencing. You have to have, you have to have the majority there within the jurisdiction. Read, read explicitly, however, you could have a majority teleconferencing as long as you're all in St. Helena. That's not a, that's not my recommended practice. It certainly doesn't foster a, a strong sense of the public's confidence in our transparency. But that would be a tech, that would be technical compliance with the Brown Act. The city, sir, Matt? So Matt brought up a situation we had in September of last year that led to litigation against the city. And the, the situation was that of the five-member planning commission, two had recused themselves because of conflicts of interest. We had three members who were able to participate. Bobby was on vacation and wanted to teleconference. Question was whether that violated this section that said that you have to have a majority of the, at least a quorum of the members of a legislative body present to avail yourself of, of the teleconferencing. We were sued because the claim was that the quorum had to be of the entire five-person legislative body, not just a quorum of those allowed to participate excluding the two members who were conflicted out. And it's still our position that we conducted that legally and in compliance with the Brown Act. But what we did instead was we said, we'd rather not litigate the issue. Let's just, let's just do a redo. The Brown Act allows you to, to say, okay, rather than litigate the, the case and spend a lot of time and money, we'll just do a redo. So we brought it back to the planning commission. We had them rescind what they had done with Bobby there present and participating. And, and it, it essentially moots out that problem. What about off-site meetings? A meeting may be held off-site under limited circumstances. The, you can conduct an inspection of real or personal property that cannot conveniently be brought to the agency. Now, real property can never be brought conveniently, conveniently to the agency. I'm referring that that is a grammatical anomaly in the statute that refers only to the personal property. You can participate in a multi-agency meeting if the meeting takes place within the jurisdiction of one of the members. This is like a, a, a JPA, a joint powers agency. This is going to be applicable mainly to the city council, but the meeting can happen at another agency's location within the JPA. And you can conduct the meeting off-site where necessary in the case of an emergency. Let's say an earthquake damages this building. Of course, you can conduct your meetings elsewhere. The Brown Act allows that. Case study. Clockwork City Council holds regular meetings on the first and third Tuesday of the month. Mayor Skip Calendario will be out of town for the next meeting. He tells a clerk to move the meeting one week later to the fourth Tuesday. The clerk complies and posts a regular meeting agenda 72 hours in advance. Is that legal? Who thinks yes? It's, who thinks no? It's no. It's no. Alan, why? That's, that's right. What, what, what he said for? I'm sorry? You would not have to cancel the first meeting, but you have to either schedule that as a special meeting, or you have to change your rules to fix your, to give you that latitude to change your regular meeting. And, which is not a recommended practice, by the way. But, but the Brown Act says that, that only, that regular meetings are meetings that are set by action of the legislative body. And you all have regular meeting schedules, and yours, how you conduct and whether you can conduct a regular meeting depends on that for the city council. Here, it's the second and fourth Tuesdays. And so that's when we have our regular meetings. Informal meetings. You need to, this is where all of you need to be very careful because it's so easy to get together with your colleagues and talk about what comes natural. It's the reason you've all been appointed to your, your positions, is that you're interested in your community, you care about what you do, you're engaged, and it's really, it's a normal human response to want to just talk when someone approaches you. But you can't do it under the Brown Act in all situations. I'm going to talk about that now. Again, informal meetings, a majority of the members of a legislative body shall not use a se, a series of communications of any kind directly or through intermediaries to discuss, deliberate, or take action on any item of business that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the legislative body. So these are the informal meetings, and these are the ones to be careful about. The first one, you probably, who's heard of a serial meeting? It's a phrase that gets used a lot. A serial meeting, the, the, the classic serial meeting is what they call a daisy chain. And that's where one member, member A, contacts member B and talks about some item of business that you've got. And member B then contacts C and talks about the same issue, and so on. Once you, once a majority of your members have done that, you have an illegal serial meeting. You violated the Brown Act. And if you're doing that intentionally and knowingly, by the way, you've committed a crime. And so you, you need not to do that. Now, I will tell you that at last check, there had never been a successful criminal prosecution for a Brown Act violation. I am not telling you to count on that continuing to be the case. Open government, transparent government advocacy is an, is at an all-time high, and we are under the microscope, all of us as public servants. Not only that, it's just the wrong thing to do. So in any way, don't count on not getting prosecuted criminally. Yes? Well, then if that member has, has, is recusing him or herself and has still talked about it, then he's violated, or she's violated, the Political Reform Act as well as the Brown Act. So, don't go there. Yeah. It's, the question was, if, if one of the members of the daisy chain here is required to and has announced that he or she will recuse him or herself because of a financial conflict of interest under the Political Reform Act, does that somehow change the situation such that you don't, it, it eliminates the, the chain? And the answer is, it doesn't. So it's still a member participating in that. So that's still a violation. Please avoid serial meetings. Now, they can happen in a lot of different ways. A serial meeting can happen electronically, we'll talk about that. And they often do happen so fast, and before you have any idea that it's happened, it's happened. So you want to, now that you're on a St. Helena board or commission, you really want to be thinking about this every time there is a communication about the city's business. So the question is, does the daisy chain prohibition apply even where A is not, B is not, A is not saying to B, hey, I talked to C, and C is going to vote this way? Even where there's no information passed about how other members feel? Who thinks that that is a way around the serial meeting? Nobody does. Good. It doesn't, because the Brown Act says you can't discuss or deliberate. You don't have to, so discussion or deliberation doesn't mean that someone has to know how another member is, feels about it or is about to vote. As long as you're discussing something that is within, I, I talk about as the people's business or the city's business, as long as you're talking about the city's business, it doesn't matter whether you tell, whether you discuss how somebody else feels about it. Or that you've spoken to them. So what happens if you get that call or email, by the way, where someone, another one of your members wants to talk about that? Or raises a, an issue that you know is one that would normally be agendized or would normally be discussed publicly? What do you do? You need to be, you need to ask the question. You need to say, I don't want, I cannot talk to you about this if you've talked to somebody else. You need to, you need to be very careful. And Frank, you know, the Brown Act recognizes that you, that part of this process of doing the people's business includes some contacts that will not involve a majority. It's okay for less than a majority of you to talk, but you need to be very careful that it's not going beyond, if it's a, if, if it's seven of you, it need, it has to, you have to be very careful it's not getting beyond three. And frankly, I would say, I wouldn't want to go there. I would want to just leave it to two if, if that were the case. Being cautious is, is really what my recommendation here because once a violation occurs and it appears on the front page of the Star or the Register, no explanation is going to sound anything other than lame. That's my experience. And, and that's not legal advice, but I, but I've seen it happen. Actually, erring on the side of caution here is, is really what you want to be doing. Great question. Question is, what about the transmission of just purely informational documents or, you know, pure information? Can you do that without violating the Brown Act? The answer to that is, is, city staff can do that. They can send you purely informational, they can brief you. They can, as long as they're not telling you how other members are feeling or about to vote on something, get your information from staff. That's the way to, to, to become informed without violating the Brown Act. If you're sending something to your full commission or to a majority, in my view, you violated the Brown Act. It's not crystal clear, but in my view, you have. Because you are, you are hearing or electronically discussing something that ought to be heard and discussed publicly. Yeah. So staff can do that by sending an email to the, to the, purely informational email to the, and that's, you know, often the case, for example, when staff sends, sends a report, a staff report and like that, to the, to the commission. That is legal to do. What you have to be very careful about when that happens, however, is that none of you talk to each other about it, either electronically or in person or by telephone. None of, don't hit reply all. Reply all is, is just, it might as well say Brown Act violation on it. That's a, that will get you into trouble. Yes? Blind copying is a better practice, and, but it should be, informational briefings of that kind really should be the exception and not the rule. It really should, because it is, it is so easy to violate the Brown Act in that, in that transmission of information. Because it's so easy for people not to know who's seen it and who has it, and then to mistakenly hit buttons, mistaken, autofill is a killer in terms of Brown Act violations. So my recommendation is that those kinds of briefings really ought to be taking place openly and publicly. The best way to do that is with, is with the agenda packets, the staff reports that you'll be getting. And off-agenda and electronic briefings ought to be rare. They ought to be the exception. But they don't always or ever violate the Brown Act if they're done correctly. Does that? Yeah. Sure. No, because that packet then is, is shared openly and publicly. And so the question was, was, does it violate the Brown Act if an individual, here a planning commissioner, sends a, sends a question to, or a concern, or an opinion to staff? And staff then presents it to the full, the full planning commission in the, at, at a meeting? In the packet at the meeting. Right. That doesn't violate the Brown Act. It's okay to, to, because that's being done openly and publicly. And, and deliberations aren't happening behind the scenes there. Okay, another kind of serial meeting is what they call a hub and spoke. So with the, with the daisy chain, it goes from A to B to C to D. Here, the hub and spoke is A, committee member A, talks to Steve. And Steve, you know, is guilty of this all the time, I know. He's facilitating all the Brown Act violations in the city. And, and what Steve does is he goes then and talks to B, and then he talks to C, and then he talks to D. In that situation, no member has talked to any other member directly. It's gone through an intermediary. Nobody thinks that's not a violation, do they? That's a, that's a, that's another common and clear violation of the Brown Act. You cannot use an intermediary to accomplish what you can't do directly. All right. And I'm sorry, I apologize if this seems obvious to all of you, but it's, it's, it's so easy to forget. Who thinks it's a violation if you've got a developer, an applicant, or, or a citizen doing it? Is, is that still a violation? It's actually, I think you've got it backwards there. They can't, if they, if they start to tell you how another commissioner feels about it, hands up, and you, and, and tell them, I, I can't hear how any other commissioners feel about this or are inclined to vote. That's the problem situation. It's problematic for a couple of different non-Brown Act reasons as well. But the Brown Act explicitly allows developers or other individuals, app, project applicants, any member of your constituencies, any member of the public, it, it, the Brown Act allows them to talk with you. That's okay. Individual contacts are okay. The, where the hub and spoke goes bad there, and, and by the way, I'll say, it's extremely common for those of you who deal with, you know, the, the individual tree owner or the individual project applicant in a planning commission context, or, you know, council context, it's extremely common for these kinds of contexts to happen where someone will say, I want to explain to you what my project's about. Give you a factual underpinning of what's happening. That's okay under the Brown Act. Now, it, it has other implications outside of the Brown Act that I'm not going to get into now that could be problematic for you. But as long as nobody is talking during these conversations about, well, Joe thinks this is a pretty dandy idea, or Nancy told me she's voting against it. Those are the kinds of conversations you cannot have, and you're going to get into trouble if you do. That's, that's hub and spoke, and that's a violation of, of that. That's, that's hub and spoke, and that's a violation of, of that. Does that? Use of email or other technology or media by a majority of the legislative body to discuss, deliberate, or take action on items within the body's jurisdiction violates the Brown Act. You can't do electronically what you can't do in person or through human bodies. Be really cautious, as I said, about email meetings. Email spreads like crazy, it's easy to violate it inadvertently, or inadvertently. You can, you can make, you can make mistakes without trying, easily. Little bit of caution, don't take a position or make a commitment to a, to a project electronically or frankly otherwise, if you think it's going to be, it's going to spread to a majority of your members. Recommendations for email, avoid sending emails to the whole legislative body, that's a given, please. If necessary, provide information only, but they, it really shouldn't be necessary that you're doing that. It's, it's, the practice that I recommend is do it in an open and agendized public meeting. If you need to, to, you know, to vet something, to provide information, it's better to do it publicly, or do it through staff. Talk to your staff, ask them to bring it up, include that in the packet that goes to your full committee. Be careful replying to emails, don't communicate your position or make a commitment on a pending matter, don't direct a reply to the majority, think carefully before you send an email. Remember that it can always be forwarded to a majority without you controlling it or knowing. And it's amazing how frequently those forwarded emails, somebody will copy Jesse at the Star. And all of a sudden, the newspaper knows you violated the Brown Act as well. We don't want to do that. So just be real cautious with emails. Case study, after attending an interesting meeting of the county board, council member I N Fo circulates an excellent summary of county actions that may affect the agency and asks each member, let me know what you think. No, no. Anybody think that's okay?
No.
Commissioner Pucci's Facebook page has a posting describing her desire to put the new dog park next to the local baseball field. Each of her fellow commission members posts individual comments about their preferred location on her page. What do you think? You have a right to do that? You violated the Brown Act on a Facebook page. Who'd have thunk it? Several planning commission members get together for breakfast at the Do Drop Inn. Over bowls of cereal, they begin discussing the city's budget woes. Is that a violation?
It's not their purview.
Thank you. Matt, Matt said it's not their purview, it's not their jurisdiction. You may be right. However, that's not clear, and I, I will bet you that Calware, the First Amendment Coalition, probably the state attorney general disagree with that. But I can't tell you that's a violation, that's a very good point. You only violate the Brown Act if that meeting is one in which you're discussing business that is your business, is the people's business. And if, if, if you as a, what I call a subordinate board, subordinate to the planning commission, if you're discussing something like the city's budget, that only affects, that is only something the city council decides, maybe that's not within your jurisdiction. However, as a board and commission, do you have a right to lobby your city council on your budget? I think you might. So I wouldn't want to be real bullish on the argument that you're not violating the Brown Act there. Did I see a hand up? Yeah, hi.
Well, several might not be the majority.
What's that?
Several planning commission members may not be the majority.
Excellent point. The question is, is, is several, what does several mean? That's a great question. Is several, if several is a majority, then it violates it. But if it's not, now, the planning commission has five members? Several, I think is definitely three, but, and three violates. Yeah. But that's a great question. If it's a, if it's committee, if one of you is, if, if one of your commissions is a seven member, and it's three members, and that's several, you're, you're not violating anything because it's not a meeting. Yes?
If you're, you're, you have two regular and an alternate.
Wow, that's a hard question. That's a good one. The question is, is what if you have an alternate on your committee, and, and the meeting happens with one of your alternates? And is that what the question was, or?
Yeah, two regular members and one two regular.
I would want to look at your bylaws to see what the role of the alternate is in that situation. And my, I'm going to go out on a limb and tell you, I think you're violating it if the alternate is participating, because I think that under our protocols for boards and commissions, the alternate exists by virtue of formal action from the council, and I think that that's going to be dispositive there. So, so I wouldn't want to count on getting around it by having your alternate there as opposed to someone else. Great question, that's a hard one. Non-meetings, these are some of the things that don't constitute a meeting under the Brown Act. An employee or official of the local agency may engage in separate conversations or communications outside of a meeting in order to answer questions or provide information, so long as that person does not communicate to members of the legislative body the comments or positions of the other member or members. That's what we were just talking about with Noah and Steve. You talk to the staff member, the staff member can brief you, the staff member can provide information, as long as you're not using that staff person as a means of finding out what a majority of your members think or feel or want to do. Another non-meeting, individual con, contacts or conversations between a member and any other person is what we talked about before, provided that that person is not serving as an intermediary between other members. Again, that's a developer, that's a project applicant, that's a property owner with a tree, who just wants to show you the tree. And as long as, as you're not talking about the other members, that's okay, that's not a meeting. Couple other exceptions that arise all the time. Attendance by a majority of the members at a conference that is related to the business of the agency that is open to the public. You can go to a public, it has to be open to the public, meaningfully, in other words, everybody gets to get in, not just, you know, you, by virtue of your status as a committee member, provided you can't talk about your business there. So, and you'll see, there are several examples that are similar to this, that all have the same limiting factor. You can't sit in the back and yak about, about the people's business. And often, I'm going to tell you, if you sit in the back and you're talking about Little League, but Jesse is in the other, is at the front of the room and he's seeing you talk, or some other member of the public who wants to know that their decision makers are making their decisions in a transparent and open way, better practice is, maybe you, you don't want to sit together unless you have to, unless you really like each other a lot. Attendance by a majority of the members at an open and publicized meeting organized to address a topic of a local community concern by a person or organization other than the local agency, chamber of commerce, you know, like group like that, you can go and, and, and sit there and you can participate. Again, provided that a majority of the members do not discuss among yourselves business of a specific nature that is within your subject matter jurisdiction. Third, attendance by a majority of members at an open and publicized meeting of another body of the local agency. That's a lot like what we're doing today. We, out of an abundance of caution, we agendize this for all of your boards and commissions, but we didn't need to. You could have attended a meeting of the city council, and by the way, if we just agendized this as a city council meeting, we would be just having a nice informal conversation here today, and had we not agendized your meeting, because we have no quorum of the city council. And so it would have just been me yakking and no formal meeting would have been happening. And that would have been okay as well, because this meeting is open to the public, it is, and it's one that presumably you're not going to be talking about the business of the, of what you do outside of, of what the purpose of this meeting is. You can attend a purely social or ceremonial occasion. A majority of you can do that, just don't talk about the, you know, your planning commission work or your tree commission work. You can attend an open and notice meeting of a standing committee. That's, this is for planning commissioners, if you have a standing committee, I don't remember that we have what standing committees we have. Other council members can do that, but you have to sit quiet there. You can't participate, you have to just only be an observer at those meetings. Case study, the Mount Vesuvius Homeowners Association is hosting its annual candidate forum. The well-publicized event is typically packed with concerned citizens, and the endorsement of the association can make or break an election. So all three council members up for reelection attend. During the allotted five-minute speaking time, each outlines what he or she intends to accomplish if reelected or reappointed. Have they violated the Brown Act? Why not?
Campaigns exempt.
Can't.
When giving a campaign speech in a thousand other platforms, there's a narrow exemption for that.
The, the answer was that the Brown Act exempts political speech and candidate statements, and that's, that's true. As long as it's given in this kind of a setting, you have a right as an elected official or a candidate to make candidate statements and to speak on issues that, that you deem to be important for the community to weigh in on. Yes?
I never, if they say a planning or a council, do like, ask those, um, fifteen members or even an officer, have another, have another, you know, that, 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 that is not so.
No, that's, that's a different exception. So we'll, let's, let's go back. Okay. So what you're referring to is you, you and a majority of the planning commission may attend an open and publicized meeting of another body of the city of St. Helena. So if you and, you can talk, but you can't talk among yourselves in the back of the room about planning commission business. So you can talk about tree committee business at that meeting, but you can't, so the one you were thinking of, however, where you have to sit quietly, it's just going to apply to city council members. And that's going to be where they attend one of their standing committees. If they have a standing subcommittee of the council, other council members who are not on that standing subcommittee can attend that, but that's where they have to sit quietly as, purely as an observer.
So I think you're, at the time, I would be on the board.
You, oh, are you saying, can you serve on the second committee? That's not a Brown Act issue, but that's an issue that, that implicates a, a principle in the common law called the, that prohibits the simultaneous holding of incompatible offices. And question is whether and to what extent offices are deemed incompatible, I could spend two hours talking on that too, I'm not going to. Typically, the answer is no, you, you serve on one, on one committee. And, but there are exceptions to that, and it's possible that you could be on two. Case study, please come to our annual fundraiser gala, says Donna Do Gooder to council member reluctant. People, true, these are actual people from cities. People will notice if you're missing since at least two other council members are going to be there. Is this a violation? It's not, that's very good. You guys are, you guys are doing great. Why isn't it a violation? It's, what's that? Thank you. The, the big qualifier there that applies is unless they're talking about, among themselves, about council business, in which case that is a verboten meeting. Here, this is a purely ceremonial event, social event, and it's perfectly fine for council members or the rest of you to show up at those meetings. Just don't talk about, about the business of your committee at that meeting. Due to the complexity of the project, commission member, members, members embers, that's a typo, members embers, Tweedle and Dee asked the city engineer to give them a briefing on the proposed bike trail that will be coming before the council soon in order to save time at the meeting. Is this okay? Who thinks it is?
How many?
What's that?
How many?
Five. Huh? No, the, somebody, I thought somebody said, how many members of the total members on the committee, on the commission were there? Let's assume five members. Two of them are, want to talk. We don't have a majority there. Secondly, it's okay to ask staff for information, as long as, well, first of all, if it's only two of you, three of you coming to ask staff for that same information at the same time would be a meeting that would be prohibited. Can't do that. However, that staff person can provide each of you that information separately. The Brown Act allows that. Okay, agenda requirements. Agenda posting requirements, agenda description, public comment, non-agendized items, adding items to an agenda. We're going to zip through all these. Nah, we won't even zip. Agenda description, each item of business to be transacted or discussed, including items to be discussed in closed session, must be the subject of a brief, general description, which generally need not exceed 20 words. Now, what does that mean in the real world? What do we want to do here with the agenda? What do people think? What's this, what's this, what's the purpose? Yeah. We want, we want there to be meaningful information so that Joe Blow, Nancy Blow, whatever, out there can decide for themselves, do I want to be, do I need to be at this meeting? Is this something that, that concerns me and my family? And so we take it seriously. I can tell you that we have, we have staff meetings every week where we talk about upcoming agendas, and we look at how we've described the items to be included on the agenda, and we take very seriously making sure that the agenda description is meaningful, so that folks looking at those agendas can, can understand what, what is going to be before your committee or your board, your council, and make a meaningful decision about whether to show up, whether to bring their neighbors out, et cetera. There are many cases that have been decided where involving the sufficiency of agenda description, including a recent one that was published by one of our courts of appeal that said that, an agenda description, which was actually quite lengthy and described in, it was a planning commission agenda, and described the project involved and what decision the planning commission was going to make, but it didn't include anything about a SEQA decision. You know, SEQA, the Environmental Equality Act, that, that pretty much, many of the discretionary decisions we make are subject to SEQA. We have to, you have to determine whether there are environmental impacts associated with your decisions. The court of appeal there said that even though there was a pretty lengthy and meaningful agenda description, just as to what the planning commission was going to be doing, it was inadequate under the Brown Act because it didn't talk about what the SEQA decision was going to be. And there's another one that also, at the city council level, level invalidated a, an agenda that didn't describe what had happened, you know, at, at a planning commission level before the council. The point is this, and your staffs who are staffing your committees and your boards are going to be bringing you agendas, but we need to be better, I think, at, at looking at these agendas and saying early on, is this meaningful to allow the public to understand? Let me give you an example of what, of how it's done wrong sometimes. An agenda might say, contract with ABC Company. What do we think?
Not enough.
Not enough? Why?
Not enough, it's, it's, it's not descriptive, it's a lot of contact.
Yeah. It's not sufficiently descriptive. Better would be proposal to award contract to ABC Company for whatever, you know, baking supplies for the city, and, and giving the contract amount, $25,000, et cetera, so that the public can decide whether it wants to come and support that, or say, no, don't award that contract, we don't want it. Anyway, the point is this, I don't want to belabor it too much, but it's, it's important for us to recognize, and I think it's important for you as committee members to recognize, that as you're seeing agenda descriptions, and if you don't think it's meaningful, maybe bring it to the attention of the staff member who is, who is working with your committee, and say, let's do better for the next agenda. Let's, you know, let's see if we can have a more meaningful agenda. And that, in that way, you would really be doing us a service as well, and, because we, you know, sometimes things slip past us. We can do better. Action or dis, non-agendized items, action or discussion on any item not appearing on the posted agenda is generally prohibited. Now, what does that mean? What does it mean? What does it mean? You can't talk about something, let alone act, you can't talk about something if it's not on your agenda, subject to certain exceptions. This is so counterintuitive to, to normal folks who come to your meetings and they want to talk to you. They want to talk because you're their, you're their, they're appointed leaders in an area that's important to them. They're going to want to come and they're going to say, you know, I think the zoning ordinance needs to be amended. I think that, that you are, you know, whatever, your, your densities need to be increased or they need to be decreased or whatever. And that's not on your agenda. The best you can do is the following, because you can't talk about it that evening, and you can't, you certainly can't take any action on it. What can you do? The Brown Act says you can briefly respond to public statements and questions. Briefly means not, and, not a discussion or a debate among members. It means you can have a brief discussion with your staff along the lines of, how quickly can we get this back on an agenda so that we can talk about it properly before the public? That's really what, what this says. You can ask a question for clarification. In other words, if you don't understand what they're saying, you don't have to sit there stony-faced and pretend that, that you got it. For you to respond, maybe in the future on a new agenda, meaningfully, you're going to want to understand what the person was asking you. You can ask a question, and you can ask it of them, or you can ask it to your staff, and staff can briefly respond and give you, uh, their response to that. Can staff come in with a PowerPoint in response to that and give you 20 minutes? No. No, you can't do that. Again, the idea is we want meaningful and open and transparent government and public participation, and to get into a discussion that's not properly agendized is, is at odds with those principles. You can make a brief announcement. We do that all the time. And by the way, we, we have a certain spot on, dedicated on our agenda for making announcements. Again, cannot be that, that, that brief announcement engenders an entire discussion or debate. You really have to err on the side of, we're not going there tonight. We can agendize this in the future. You can provide a reference to staff or other sources for factual information, and you can request staff to report back to the legislative body in a subsequent meeting. You can ask staff to agendize it as well, so that you can all discuss it, as I said. This, by the way, is something that is, is violated inadvertently all the time, and that is talking about things that are not on the agenda. You have to have it properly agendized in a way that's meaningful, and you have to not go outside of what you've agendized. All right. Now, will there be some situations where you will want to and need to add an item on an agenda? These are going to be emergencies. It's not going to have, it's not going to be what you do all the time. But here are the, here are the things you can do. You can take action on an item of, discuss and take action on an item of business not appearing on the agenda, one, when the majority decides that an emergency situation exists, and when we're talking about that, we're talking about a work stoppage, we're talking about a crippling earthquake, like that, a true emergency. Emergency is not bad planning. It's not, it's not forgetting to get something on the agenda like that. When two-thirds present, or all the members of less than two-thirds are present, determine two things. One, that there is a subsequent need to take immediate action, and that the need for action came to the attention of your board subsequent to the agenda being posted. This is something to be careful about. You can, if, if there is need for immediate action, and that need arose after your agenda was posted, then a supermajority of you can vote to consider the matter. And that's going to, by the way, take two votes. You first have to vote to authorize it to be discussed, and then you, you will take whatever vote you want to take on the, on the item. So, you have to go through that preliminary stage and make that finding. Finally, when the item appeared on the agenda and was continued from a meeting held not more than five days earlier, this goes to rules of adjourning meetings, and we're not going to go into that in too much detail, that's a parliament, parliamentary procedure, but you can, you can, this is another recognized exception in the Brown Act.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So, the need for action came to the attention of, or used to subsequently agenda being posted. Can, can you, can you elaborate on what that means, came to the attention of?
I'm going to.
Is it something that you have no idea was going to happen until it was...
Great question. The question is, what does it mean, come to your, come to the attention of the agency after the agenda was posted? And I'm going to get to that in a second. It's not on the agenda, states mayor hurry up, but phase one of the East Area Project was completed early, and if we start now on phase two, we'll save tens of thousands of dollars in costs. Can I have a motion to add this to the agenda so that we can issue a notice to proceed to the contractor on phase two? What do we think? Why not?
It's not an emergency.
It's not an emergency. The, the answer was it's not an emergency, and that's right. It's not an emergency. Saving money is not an emergency. The harder question, I think, is...
What's a big question?
I'm very sorry about... Saving money, yeah.
Is it an emergency?
The Brown Act, I, let me put it this way. The Brown Act and our legislators in Sacramento don't consider it to be an emergency. The, the other question is, can you do it under the other part, the, the other exception that, which is the second one there? When two-thirds present determine that there is a subsequent need to take immediate action, and that the need for action came to the attention of the local agency subsequent to the agenda being posted? All right. Well, maybe we, maybe, we don't really know here. We don't have enough facts here to say, but, but I think that it would be hard for me to justify saying that they just found out that phase one was completed early, you know, within the 72-hour period since the agenda was posted. So, in addition to the fact it's not an emergency, it also doesn't qualify, I don't think, for the second exception. Another case story. We learned this morning of an opportunity for a state grant. We learned this morning, says the city engineer at the meeting, but our application has to be submitted in two days. We'd like the board to give us a go-ahead tonight to prepare the application, even though it's not on the agenda. What do we think? Peter's skeptical. Why?
Well, it could be an emergency. I mean, it could be, maybe something, maybe absolutely, perhaps, we get a grant for it and want to save, uh...
Well, that's a good one. I hadn't thought of that myself, actually, is, is, so Peter's invoking the emergency exception, and he's thinking that maybe there was an earthquake two days before that, and we just found out that there was an immediate state grant available that we would need to apply for. Possibly an emergency. Good question. Who decides what is an emergency? You do. You do. The, the majority of you voting. And you have to, now, I'm not at all of your meetings, but I'll tell you, an emergency is typically not what is expedient. What is expedient, what saves you money, those things are not going to be deemed an And usually, in my experience, is if you agendize a special meeting, you go through the proper channels, you do it right, you wait till the next, usually, you can, you can do it right, and you can avail yourself of, of whatever you think you needed to do on this hurry-up basis. So, but anyway, the answer is you do with the advice from, from me. The tougher one here is, is, is this, is there an, is there, on this case study, is there a need for immediate action that came to the attention of the agency after the agenda was posted?
Based on that, yes.
Yes.
It's hard to believe, but...
Yeah. Based on, suspend disbelief, assume my facts. Yeah. Yeah, so this is probably, this is probably valid for them to take that up at the meeting. All right. Public access to meetings, physical accessibility, meeting documents, recorded meet, recording of meetings, right to record, public participation, and limits on public participation. Members of the public cannot be required to register their names. You can't make somebody either sign in, register to, to get into the building, you can't make them give their name. They're going to come up to the dais, and they're going to say, hi, my name is whatever, John Doe, and, I'm sorry. Someone's going to come up to the dais, and they're going to say, they're going to start saying, I, I want to weigh in on this issue, and you're going to say, excuse me, can you state your name and address? We do that all the time. Can you do that?
Grace gave the right answer.
You can request it, and they can tell you to go pound sand. They have a right to be, you have a right to be anonymous. You have, the public has a right to be anonymous at these meetings. So, you have every right to say, you know, it, it'll make our lives easier, we can get back to you with an answer if we've got your name and address. It gives us context for, you know, whether you live in the neighborhood of the decision or whatever, but if they tell you no, then you have to allow them to, to participate. They cannot be required to register their names, provide other information, complete a questionnaire, or otherwise fulfill any condition precedent to attending a meeting. No meeting or any other function can be held in a facility that prohibits attendance based on race, religious creed, color, national origin, ancestry, or sex, and I should say that that's added to sexual orientation as well, or, which is inaccessible to the disabled. You cannot have a meeting or, or government function in that, in that kind of a facility. By the way, I don't know any government who is doing that anymore, or facilities that, anyway, if, if I'm naive or, or misinformed, but... Good question. Is there an elevator to get here?
There is.
Yeah. I never take it, but that was a question I asked Cindy the other day when I was preparing this, and I was saying, I sure don't, I sure hope that's not the case. We gave a, I gave a, I'm pretty active in the city attorney's department for the League of California Cities, and we had, we have conferences twice a year, and we had one last fall, and one of our sessions was on certain ADA disability issues, and we had a plat, speaker platform that was inaccessible, and the speaker, who's a dear friend of mine, couldn't get up without assistance onto it. How embarrassing is that, by the way? By the way, we don't do that anymore, is it? Cities have to be, this room has to be, and I'm assuming it is, fully accessible to those who, who are disabled and, and can't manage the stairs. Meetings, as I said, must be held in facilities accessible to disabled persons. Yes?
So, on the teleconference, is the house, or are you, uh, accessible?
That is not explicit in the Brown Act. My belief is that, the question is, if you're teleconferencing, must the remote teleconference location be accessible to the disabled? My answer to that is, is, the short answer is yes, it has to be accessible. If it's not, you can't teleconference from that location. The Brown Act doesn't, doesn't say that explicitly, but I think that's the case. And, and that's the advice that I would give.
Is this a, is this a, uh, that there's a, uh, hearing, uh, that's, uh, going on all these meetings?
The question is, must there be hearing, assistance for the hearing impaired at these I don't know the answer to that. And Cindy, is our, are telecast captioned, or is closed captioning available? I don't know the answer to that.
It is a question.
Yeah. I don't know the answer to that.
It's presently not.
It's not, it's presently not. Yeah. And I don't know the answer whether, whether that is a violation, but we will look into that. Yeah. Agendas must include information regarding contact information for requests for disability-related accommodations. We do that. I know that our agenda satisfies that. Agendas and other documents must be made available in appropriate alternative formats when requested. Case study. A young woman calls the clerk's office and tells the clerk in broken English her father is a recent immigrant and does not understand English. He heard from a friend that a sewer treatment plant is going to be built right near their home. She asks the clerk to send her father copies of any agenda where the plan is to be discussed, and also asks the clerk to translate the agenda into her father's native language. I didn't write this, so, but Starbuckistani. Anyway, it's, yeah, coffee speak. What is the city's obligation there? Who, what do we think? What's that? Grace thinks we have to translate it. The answer is you don't. You're not required to translate the agenda. What's that? Yeah, yeah. Now, whether that is something that, I don't, I don't believe that we do that or, or have had that request, but, but the Brown Act doesn't require it. Meeting documents. The public has a right to review agendas and other writings distributed to a majority of the legislative body, except for privileged documents. Privileged documents are typically going to be the advice that I write to the city council or to any of you. They're going to be from time to time. We will be providing confidential city attorney advice to your board or commission. That doesn't, that's not required to be provided to the public. A fee or deposit may be charged for a copy of a public record. That's limited by law, by the way, the amount of that fee has to be representative solely of the city's cost. Writings must be made public under the following circumstances. At the time distributed to a majority of your, the legislative body, that's you, before or at a meeting, if that document was prepared by the agency or by one of you, okay? At the meeting, it has to be made available to the public, if it's made available, if, if it was distributed either by the city, any of us, or by any of your members at that meeting. Important for you to remember, it can't be that you're sitting at a meeting deliberating on a document that we provided you, that the city provided you, or that one of your own members provided the others, and you're all looking at, at that, and members of the public don't have that same access. The Brown Act says you have to take the time to make that document available to the public at that meeting. Or after the meeting, if the document is prepared by someone else. So, somebody comes up to you, a member of the public says, I, listen, can I pass this out to the members of the committee, of the commission? They pass it out? You don't have to pass, make that available to the public. It would be great, by the way, as a matter of practice, to have copies available if that's possible, but the Brown Act doesn't require you to make that available until after the meeting, sometime reasonably after the meeting, under that circumstance, where some other member of the public provides that document.
Can I ask your question?
Yeah.
With the PowerPoint presentation, I've seen it where it's often the case where city departments who are presenting a PowerPoint to a legislative body will also provide hard copies of the PowerPoint. They always seem redundant to me since you're going to be presenting those slides at the meeting to the public, but I wasn't sure.
That's a really good question that's not addressed, and that is, if the, if the document you're all looking at is, is in electronic format, it's, it's like this, do we have to have a, a hard copy available? The answer to me is yes, you do. If it's something that is, that is part of the, of the staff presentation, then that has to be in hard copy available, either on, on request at the meeting or in the packet. And I believe mine is available in the packet today, this PowerPoint. By the way, if somebody, if some member of the public wants to come to your meeting and they want to, they want, as part of their public testimony, they want to present a short film or a PowerPoint or something like that, do you, do you have to let them? The answer is yes, you do, provide it, and we're going to get into, there are time limits, they can't exceed their time limit, and I'm, I'm assuming all of you have adopted time limits. I know that the, the planning commission has. I think we do in our protocols. So, the other question is, do you have to, if you have to allow the PowerPoint, do you have to allow them to use your equipment? The answer is no, you don't. So, if some member of the public wants to come and use a, and present a PowerPoint, it's incumbent on them to provide equipment of their own. Now, as a matter of practice, you may decide that you're going to facilitate that. It's probably going to slow down your meeting, it's going to be a matter that you're going to have to decide. The law doesn't require you to provide the city's AV equipment for that.
If you can't...
If you can't, you don't have to. You may, you may, if that's a decision you make as a committee. The public is allowed to use audio or videotape recorders or still or motion picture cameras at an open meeting. Absent... Absent a reasonable finding by the body, that's you, you decide that, that such a recording, if continued, would persistently disrupt the proceedings due to noise, illumination, or obstruction of view. Be really careful if you're going to tell somebody not to photograph or record. This is, the idea of disruption of your meeting as a basis for preventing someone to record is a very narrow one. And disruption has to be real and true. Now, I've seen it where, at least in the old days, I don't know if it's still happening, where TV stations would come into particularly difficult or controversial meetings, and there'd be huge lights. And that would be, if that were to continue for the entire meeting, that would certainly at least fall within the realm of reasonable disruption. You could make that finding. If it's only going to continue for a short period of time, the Brown Act says it has to persistently disrupt the meeting. I would be very reluctant to tell somebody that they cannot exercise their right to record the meeting. Very reluctant to find a disruption. Public participation. A regular meeting agenda must allow an opportunity for members of the public to speak on any item of interest, so long as the item is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the legislative body. A regular meeting. What about this meeting? Thanks. Matt says it's a special meeting, and it is. This meeting was not set, the city's regular meetings on the second and fourth Tuesday of every month, by council resolution, I believe by the municipal code as well, states that the meetings start at 6:00. This is a meeting that started at 4:00. It's a special meeting. The public must be allowed to speak on a specific item of business before or during the legislative body's consideration of it. So, at all of your meetings, I'm hoping that you allow the public an opportunity to speak on every item on your agenda. They also are entitled to speak at your regular meetings on anything that's interesting to them within your subject matter jurisdiction. In other words, the public can speak beyond the items that we've set on the agenda for regular meetings. That's not the case for special meetings, by the way. Public comments at special meetings may be limited to the item on the agenda only. That's right. The question is, can you shut somebody down who starts talking about the weather? Or talking about, what's that? Yeah, yeah. Where someone is talking about something entirely extraneous to the business that is normally within what you do, yes, you can make the decision to rein them back in. Good practice, by the way, is to gently invite them to rein it back in first, and if they continue to violate that, then your chair can stop it. What's that? Yes. Now, subject matter jurisdiction of the planning commission is very different from the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. And so, in my experience, it's very difficult to tell someone at a city council meeting where, what can possibly fall within the city council's broad areas of discretion. It's very different. Planning commission, you have a pretty narrow, all of your different committees have a pretty narrow subject matter jurisdiction. And if someone is talking about something that is, again, I think the phrase was off the rail, you can rein them back in. Legislative body may adopt reasonable regulations, including time limits on public comments, i.e. three minutes. The other thing you can do is, if you have a particularly difficult meeting, you have an issue where you have 300 people who want to speak, as opposed to your normal 10. You can adopt a limitation at that meeting to, you can either require people to, you can ask people whether they will allow someone to speak for them, or you can narrow the time even further. In doing that, you need to be very careful about one thing. Treat them fairly. Apply the, be, don't allow some people who are being kind of polite to exceed their time limit substantially. And when someone is really ripping you, you know, and your policies, you don't want to be quick to cut them off. Because if you're, that's called content regulation. That's a First Amendment violation as well as a Brown Act violation. Need to be really careful. The takeaway for all of you is be fair and be consistent with how you apply these rules. And I think the best practice is one that is really hard to do when your neighbor is up speaking, and they, you know, they kind of like to go on and on. You really, the best practice, if you want to be able to enforce these limits, and you're going to want to at some meetings when you have 75 speakers, is to be consistent, be fair and consistent. Limits on public participation. The legislative body, you, may remove persons from a meeting who willfully interrupt proceedings. If orders still cannot be restored, the meeting room may be cleared. Members of the news media who have not participated in the disturbance must be allowed to continue to attend the meeting. And by the way, there has to be a, if you do clear the room, and hopefully you never have to do that, that's an unpleasant thing to have to do, but we all see it from time to time where you just have very disruptive people or very emotional people. If you ever have to do that, you really also have to have a plan for allowing people back into the meeting, those people who didn't participate in the disturbance. And that's a difficult thing to do without running afoul of the First Amendment as well. Well, I mean, the best practice is, at a city council meeting, I've seen it where police have been called, and you can call police in, in that situation. If you have someone who is, a true disruption is going to be something that will warrant a police protection. But we want to be very careful for what is really a disruption. And this is, again, another two-hour spiel on the First Amendment, but somebody criticizing you as a board, you as a board member, a staff member, if someone comes in and says, "Tom Brown is the worst city attorney I've ever seen," they have a right to do that. And they can do it with some emotion, and they can do it with some volume in their voice. It's a fine line to determine when it gets, when it crosses that point, and there's case law that deals with this, as to what is a true disturbance of the meeting that justifies cutting the person's mic and eventually, and if they continue at the mic, and I guarantee in almost every situation, that person will continue at the mic. You'll, your chair will typically, rather than clear the room, will first say, "We're going to take a five-minute break." And that's a great practice. That will calm people down in most situations. Nine times out of 10, the disruptive person will leave the podium and problem solved. But not always. And in that other situation, then the chair will determine whether to clear the room. And you get police support. Again, expressions of support or opposition to matters before the body, before you, provided they are not overly disrupted, constitute protected speech. First Amendment Bill writes, people have a right. Legislative body cannot prohibit public criticism of policies, procedures, programs, I ran out of P-words, or services of the agency or the emissions of the legislative body itself. They have a right to, they really have a right to criticize us and what we do. Case study. Reverend Brimstone discovers that each time he speaks about the evils of society during the general public comment period of the agency meetings, which are televised, he gets some new visitors to his house of worship. During the comment period of one meeting, he accuses, he accuses the agency's presiding officer, Mayor Galbreth, of being a sinner because the agency provides public services to a strip club. This is something, as you can probably guess, is not a presentation we've given to smaller cities like San Antonio that often. A lot of the bigger cities have this problem with the strip club. Anyway, a presiding officer directs the board clerk to turn off the power on the speaker's microphone. Can we do that? No. First Amendment, they have a right to do it, even if the person is showboating. That's going to happen a lot of the time. It's going to gall you. Sometimes the people who criticize us most loudly are people who are grandstanding. They have a right to grandstand. They can do that. It's legal. It's their First Amendment right. Voting disclosure. Legislative bodies must publicly report any action taken and the vote or abstention on each action taken by each member present for the action at a meeting. No secret ballots. You can't vote by secret ballot, even if you think that's going to save some embarrassment or, you know. Often what happens, for example, I've seen it happen where city councils, as they're picking you, they're picking members for boards and committees, they don't want to disclose the vote because they don't want anybody embarrassed or feelings hurt over these votes. The problem is, you got to do it. The Brown Act requires that there be no secret ballots, and each vote, even if it is embarrassing, has to be publicly noted. People have a right to know how their individual representatives and how all of their board members are voting on issues of importance to the public. No, that doesn't mean that. It means that at the meeting, it has to be clear how each member voted. If there is, if it's clear to the public who is voting aye and nay, that's okay. A better practice, however, is roll call on each action. Better practice, because that's much more transparent. Where action is taken other than by, answer to the question, other than by roll call vote, the names of each member present who dissented, abstained, or otherwise did not participate it should be stated so that there's a clear record of how the entire body voted. This information should be included in the minutes of the meeting. So, action minutes, if you're, if we are doing minutes, and I'm hoping we are, should record the vote and the identity of all of you who voted and how you voted. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on closed sessions because it's going to be really rare that any of you, other than the city council, will have closed sessions. The Brown Act allows closed sessions as an exception to the rule that agency meetings must be open and public. Only topics authorized under the Brown Act may be discussed in closed session. A lot of people, I think, have a perception that when the council or one of you is going into a closed session, that it's sort of carte blanche to talk about anything you want. That's just not the case. The Brown Act really does constrain what may be discussed in the closed session, and it also constrains what specific kinds of discussions can take place. And they are these. The most common ones are personnel matters, certain personnel matters. You're not going to, most of you aren't going to deal with personnel matters unless you're elected to the city council. And the city council isn't going to deal with them very often, except with those employees over whom it has appointment authority, such as the city manager. Litigation. We talk about litigation in closed session all the time. It's the only place I can talk to my city council candidly about the strengths and weaknesses of either cases in which we're about to get sued or cases in which the city's already involved. The Brown Act basically recognizes that cities are not second-class citizens. They need to, they need to be able to rely on the advice of their lawyers, and if their lawyers are giving advice only publicly, they can't do it. Real estate negotiations. If a city is inclined to buy or sell property, it may go into closed session, but only to discuss the price and terms. Used to be that cities felt that the real property in closed sessions was, again, an open door to talk about a lot of things in closed session, such as the feasibility of certain projects. You can't do that. The state attorney general said, "You're really constrained in your real estate closed sessions." Finally, cities can talk about their labor negotiations in closed session. Yes. Question is, is after a case settles, does the public have any access to the settlement documents? Settlement documents are public records. Any agreement that the city reaches. The city, the city council may authorize a settlement agreement in closed session. It's happened on, you know, a few occasions recently. The Calderon lawsuit, many of you might be familiar with that. We settled in closed session, and immediately after that settlement became final, not only did we report it to the public and make that document available to the public, we kind of went a step further and posted it on the website, issued a press release and like that, so that people were aware. We don't always do that for every settlement, but every settlement we enter into, that the council approves in closed session, is a public document once it's been signed and finalized. Yes. Every final, every, every final agreement, first of all, the real estate negotiations are nine times out of 10 going to go to the city council for public approval before the sale is consummated, or for the sale to be consummated. Labor negotiations, same thing. The MOUs are typically always approved by the council, and those are public documents, those agreements. Yeah. Personnel matters, as they become final, are also public. Really, everything we do, virtually everything we do, once it becomes final, is the public's business, and that's available. And although there are exceptions, the best practice is tell people that if they want to know, to request it. And we are obligated to make that available upon request, once it's final. Prior to holding a closed session, the legislative body must disclose in an open meeting the item or items to be discussed in closed session. We do that with detailed agendas, descriptions, and we also allow the public to speak to us before we go into closed session. Always, when we have a closed session set, you'll see that there is an agenda item for the public to come in and say something about the closed session. It's a practical matter. For the kinds of closed sessions that we are not disclosing as we can, the name of the case, for example, the public's really not going to know. And so often, we've had, we've had situations where the public comes in and say, "I want to know more about what you're talking about in closed session." And typically, we'll say, "I know you do, but we can't." And it's the best we can do in that situation. And we become transparent, once, as I said, once we have made a final decision. Reporting out from closed session, legislative body must reconvene and report on any final action. That term "final action" is a defined term. Not everything is a final action, not every direction that the council gives in closed session. And again, Bobby, an answer to your question, once final approval occurs, related documents must be disclosed upon request. Disclosure of closed session info. If ever we meet with you in closed session, remember this, you are bound to maintain the confidentiality of what you hear in closed session. You're also bound to maintain the confidentiality of any advice that I give you in a written memorandum. Confidential memorandum, confidential information means communication made in a closed session that is specifically related to the basis for the closed session meeting. Disclosing closed session information is a problem, and it is considered to be a crime as well. Only the city council has the right to waive confidences. Legal challenges. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this. There are, in a civil action, may be filed by the district attorney or any interested person. They can ask the court to do a couple of things. Stop or prevent violations or threaten violations of the Brown Act by members of the legislative body. They can determine the action, the lawsuit can determine the applicability of the Brown Act to some past actions or threatened future actions of a legislative body. Not going to get in, there's a lot of litigation. I'm currently in some for another city now over what that means, that second basis. And someone can sue you to void the action that was taken in violation of the Brown Act. So, there are real consequences, bad consequences, in violating the Brown Act. Our actions can be invalidated, and that has, it can have really deleterious consequences for both the city and people involved in our decision-making. So, we want to be careful. There is always an opportunity to cure a Brown Act violation. Typically, there is. This opportunity to cure applies where someone is seeking to void one of our actions. And to do that, before someone can get a court to order us to And to do that, before someone can get a court to order us to, our court can invalidate or void one of our decisions, someone can come to us, they, they have to, within a certain period of time, send us a letter demanding that we cure, and if we do that in a certain period of time, they don't have a lawsuit under the Brown Act. Similarly, if someone wants to sue you claiming ongoing violations of the Brown Act, they have to send, it's similar to, but slightly different from, a request to cure. They send you a request to cease and desist your illegal violations of the Brown Act. And again, there are time periods that apply to that. Who can file an action? Anybody can file an action against us. As I said, someone down in San Diego can sue us if they feel that we're violating the Brown Act. They can invalidate our actions, as I said, and if they win, they can recover their legal costs and their attorney's fees, which can get quite expensive. So, conversely, a city is only entitled to get, to recover its attorney's fees if the action is deemed to be clearly frivolous, and it's very, very seldom that a court is going to find a Brown Act case against us to be clearly frivolous. All of this is, aside from being legal mumbo jumbo to many of you, all of this is a cautionary tale that says, there are consequences to violating the Brown Act, and we want to be very careful. Case study. Members of a citizens group curb, cure unnecessary and repeated Brown Act violations, watch in disbelief on the public cable channel as the local agency board votes to increase their salaries and the item is not on the agenda. Call Attorney Sharkey, screams the group's president, and tell him to file a lawsuit by the end of the day tomorrow. What do we think? Do they have a lawsuit? You bet they do. They do. And by the way, as I said at the outset, if you're violating the Brown Act, if you're having a serial meeting behind the scenes, if you're talking about something at an open meeting and trying to take action on something that's not properly agendized, and you're doing that with the intent to deprive the public of their right to participate meaningfully, you've committed a crime. And it's something to really, you know, take very seriously. That's it. I've talked way too long. Questions? We still have some time for questions, and maybe it'd be a good idea, too, to allow folks to take a break before the council meeting.
In that last example, they'd have to give you an opportunity to cure, though, right?
They would have to give us an opportunity to cure, and it's a limited opportunity to cure. They have to give that to us within 30 days because it was something that was taken openly during a public meeting. Does anybody have any more questions? Thank you all. I appreciate it.
Thank you all. We've got a lot of, I think, everybody a little occupied.
I advise that we would begin this meeting shortly after six. Let's begin with a pledge of allegiance, and Mr. Doring, would you lead us in the pledge?
Certainly. Put your hand up your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Black, roll call.
Mayor Galbraith.
Here.
Vice Mayor White.
Here.
Councilmember Doring.
Here.
Kroll.
Pitts.
Here.
I would like to begin this meeting with a moment of silence in memory of the cyclist who lost her life near Potts this afternoon. Let me open the public forum. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address us on items not on our agenda this evening. The time limit is three minutes per person. Again, not on our agenda. Does anybody wish to speak at public forum? Seeing none, we will then proceed to reports by staff and city council, future agenda items, and AB 1234 reports.
I have nothing, thank you.
Mr. Brown? Ms. Mitz? Ms. Black? Mr. Palmer? Mr. Hodge? Mr. Pitts? Mr. Doring?
I have nothing.
I have just one item myself. Commissioner Matthew Heil advised me that he was resigning his spot on the Pining Commission effective June 30th, 2015. He and his family are relocating, at least for a year, to the Philadelphia area. To me, it's a big loss. He served five, five and a half years on the commission, including a stint as its chair. He always brought careful preparation, a balanced perspective, and well-reasoned judgment to commission matters, and we wish him and his family well in their new relocation. Thanks very much, Commissioner Heil, for your service. The next item on our agenda is a presentation. Good advice from the vice mayor. Next item is a presentation from the Napa County Open Space Study by Mr. Woodbury. Is Mr. Woodbury here? And I guess, all right.
I'm Roberta Oswald.
All right, very good. Nice to have you here.
Thank you. I'd also want to thank the city for appointing me last year as the city representative on the Napa County Park and Open Space District Advisory Committee. We've been meeting monthly since September to review the district's progress and develop recommendations for moving forward. And as residents in Napa County, I have to share with us that we're really fortunate to have the current district's board and staff in place, and I commend them, most notably John Woodbury, who, of course, isn't here tonight, for doing a great job over the last eight years. Tonight, we have Michael, Michael and Tony here also to answer any questions that may arise.
Welcome.
In summation, short and sweet, you probably all read the article in the Register yesterday on this topic, but after considering a number of alternatives, the committee found that in order to generate adequate funding to continue progressing and growing, that we felt the district needs to explore new sources of revenue, which could continue, which could include partnering with the county to place a quarter cent sales tax on the ballot. Without additional funds, the district will really only be able to sort of maintain and operate its existing revenue resources. And that's pretty much in a nutshell what, what we came to the conclusion of, and thanks for your time and consideration and opportunity. And Michael, if you want to.
Yes. I'm Michael Haley. I'm the district director for Ward Three, which includes St. Helena. It's the same district as Diane Dillon's supervisory district, and I came in place of John, and then Tony Norris is with me. He's our immediate past president of the board. We both just have a couple of quick comments. Yeah, the, I appreciate Roberta's efforts in the citizens committee. We had a wonderful citizens committee. As Alan knows, I've been on a lot of citizens committees, and this was one of the most unanimous coming together of people. They, they reached consensus on almost every issue. They did a fantastic job, and I just want to thank them for that. One of the conclusions that they reached, let me first say that the, the district has been going since 2007, and we've primarily funded by a little slice of the TOT tax from the county of Napa. And we've had 10 projects, we call them projects, Bothay Park, most familiar, the Bale Griss Mill, Oat Hill Mine Trail. We recently opened the Moore Creek State Park, or County Park, excuse me. That's our biggest park now and probably our biggest accomplishment so far. We had reached a point where we'd spent all the money that we had. We couldn't do, go any further. There's a list of like 30 different projects that we would like to do, and so that's why we brought the committee together to see, what do you think we should do? And they were more aggressive in wanting to expand and to go for a tax increase even than, than I was expecting, and so we're going to follow up on that. We're going to do some polling. We wanted to just put this idea out to you all right now so that you know that that's what the committee's recommended. It doesn't necessarily mean we're going to go forward with it because we've got to talk to the rest of the county and the city councils and the board of supervisors and that thing, but just to sort of let you, put you on notice for that. We're going to do polling and see what we get back from that, and, you know, we appreciate your interest in moving forward. And now Tony has a couple of comments.
Thank you very much, Mr. Haley. Yes.
Sure. Mayor Galbraith and councilmembers, I'm Tony Norris, and one of the original elected board members when we first formed our Parks and Open Space District by the vote of the people of Napa nine years ago. And it's been a real pleasure to serve in that capacity, but it was a particular pleasure to see the performance of this particular advisory committee we put together and how they dutifully went ahead and unanimously arrived at findings and conclusions that you read in the report before you. It's a rare thing. I've participated in a number of different panels and task forces and commissions in this county, but have also been involved in other committees in other counties where there isn't always that type of consensus. So, I think this advisory committee needs to be commended. They did a great job, very knowledgeable, asked all the right questions, and then struggled to find the answers, and now we, as a board, are going to have to continue to find those answers. I'd certainly like to draw your attention to a portion of page five in the report towards the bottom, where it suggested how partnerships could be formed with the local municipalities. It is a great opportunity to craft something that would be beneficial to both our park district generally, the visitors and residents of the county, as well as what it would take to get urban residents in this county out to enjoying the natural open spaces of the county in a more expedient fashion. I was particularly enchanted by how one committee member reported back to the full committee it being a sort of spokes-of-the-wheel concept where you concentrate on getting the urban residents out to the peripheral areas of the county safely, on enhanced and connected trail systems, and in doing so, for them the opportunity to get and enjoy the open spaces that we, the park district, are actively creating. And certainly with the connection of those trails, it's a great opportunity. It's an opportunity that sometimes is lost for unsafe routes. I don't know what the circumstances were earlier today out on the highway, but I know this Highway 29 has been a great concern to bicyclists for a long time. There are those of us who would certainly like to see safer connections made, whether it's the Vine Trail or some other trail system that could be worked on jointly. Just one suggestion, it's worth a lot of study, you as elected officials, we'd certainly like to see your concurrence as we get into this. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. I would only say that since the Moore Creek Park has been open, Sarah and I have been up there, and I would encourage every resident of St. Helena to spend a morning up there. It's gorgeous. That takes us on to our consent items. And here, any member of the council can pull a consent item, and any member of the public can ask that we have a hearing on a consent item, so don't be bashful. I'm going to read them off, and if anybody wishes a hearing on that item, please speak up. 12. Consideration and proposed approval of a resolution approving the First Amendment to an Agreement for Consulting Services with RGH Consultants in the amount of $1,149.54 for construction, management, and inspection services for the St. Helena Wastewater Treatment and Reclamation Plant Pod 1A Repair Project. An excellent Brown Act description. 13. Consideration and proposed approval of a resolution accepting the work and directing the filing of the Notice of Completion for the St. Helena Water Storage Tank 1A CIP Project W-83. 14. Consideration and proposed approval of a resolution accepting the work and directing the filing of the Notice of Completion for the St. Helena Sewer Main Cleaning and TV Inspection Project, Capital Project S-38. 15. Consideration and proposed approval of a resolution approving the Second Amendment to Agreement for Consulting Services with Bennett Engineering Services, Inc., in the amount of $26,000 for on-call consulting services for the wastewater treatment and reclamation plant. 16. Consideration and proposed approval of a resolution approving a professional services agreement with Geosphere Consultants, Inc., in the amount of $17,911.28 for geotechnical services related to the St. Helena Water Storage Tank 1A CIP Project W-83. Does anybody wish any of these to be pulled from the consent calendar? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Move to approve.
Second.
Items 12 through 16.
Mr. Doring has seconded. Ms. Black, roll call.
Vice Mayor White.
Yes.
Councilmember Doring.
Yes.
Kroll.
Yes.
Pitts.
Yes.
Mayor Galbraith.
Yes. That takes us to item 20.
Or 17.
Excuse me, 17. I knew I was jumping ahead too quickly. Okay. This is a direction to the city manager regarding the St. Helena School District Pool. So, the city manager, would you speak to that, please?
Thank you very much, members of the council, Mr. Mayor. This item came about, the superintendent requested to speak to myself and Heidi Arias, the recreation director, with regards to the future of the pool that's built here on, on school district property. The pool, prior to being reconstructed, had been managed through a nonprofit with the city for many, many years, and when the school built the new pool, they contracted with a private firm to manage all aspects of the pool. Believe it or not, it's coming up on its year anniversary, and so the school district is interested in looking at potentially other options, and so they did approach the city, and I didn't feel comfortable because I hadn't ever spoken about this item. I have no real background with regards to pool management, and what I'm asking for this evening is to know if the council would like me to engage in these initial discussions with the school district to talk about some potential formula, or scenario, or strategy, or proposal that the city would be engaged in for the management of the pool. And this could be anything from, we take over full management of the pool with a financial, with basically the school district paying for that, all the way to the city's not involved at all, and something in between where maybe we're responsible for some portion that, that has to do with our programming. And so that's what I'm looking for this evening, is direction from council for me to either say no to the school district, we're not interested, or to be able to say yes, we'd like to engage in conversation.
When you say full management, what's entailed?
I don't know.
In terms of staffing?
Staffing would be, we would have to assess that. So, there'd be some kind of a pool manager, whether that's a full-time or a part-time person, there are certainly lifeguards, there's someone who works the front desk to take class reservations and information, and so it really depends on what kind of model the school district and the organization managing the pool put together.
Are there any other initial comments from council before I open it up to public hearing?
I'll wait.
All right. Does any member of the public wish to comment on this issue? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and invite further council discussion, and you can't wait any longer, Mr. Pitts.
I personally feel like this is moving in the right direction for the pool, and I think we should explore this and look at it with open arms, and hopefully find a win-win where the citizens and the school district can all benefit from perhaps a greater level of programming, more flexible hours in terms of when the pool can be used by the public, and so on and so forth. So, I think we should explore it and see if there's, I know it's more, more work, but it's a, it's a resource that I think the community expected to be more of a community resource and not just the school, and so I think this is a good, a good progression in the lifecycle.
That's cool.
I, I agree with Greg. I think that, you know, everybody was, everybody funded the pool and was expecting more of a community pool, so I think it would be, it would enhance the benefits of a community pool if we explored it, but I don't know at all what that entails, so.
Mr. Doring?
Well, I'm, I'm generally in favor of exploring it. I've talked about partnerships since I've been on the council, so it's one other area of partnership. I- I do think that there could be some benefits to the community in terms of how we operate, in terms of our ability to do better outreach than the prior contractor did to get these programs implemented. Obviously, cost and staffing and all those things will have to be fleshed out. So yes, I'm in favor of at least having the discussion and would love to hear more about it through, I guess, is one of our representatives involved in that discussion, or is it just you on the city manager superintendent level?
Right now, it would just be between staff, so the superintendent, myself. They have a facilities chief, CBO, chief business officer, and Heidi. So that's where it would initiate, and then obviously there'd be points where we'd come back to the council, and we can either share with you where we are or some options, but certainly it would be as publicly as we can make it.
Maybe we could roll the auditorium in, too. Get some jazz concerts and some public events going.
He's thinking big.
And while we're at it, I know a lot of people in the community would like to use that field also.
See how we... Comprehensive discussion.
This is mission creep. Mission creep.
Should we just be talking narrow?
There was a group...
I'm kidding, although, you know, there are some benefits to having a broader discussion at some point.
During some discussions about how big should the pool be, should there be two pools or one pool, there was a community group that came together, and I believe they did a lot of research on other communities and how their pools are staffed and how they're run, and maybe one of their leaders could come back into the discussion, because I think there was some serious time invested into trying to figure out, how do you make it pencil, right, where it is feasible and it's not a drain on anyone?
Mr. White?
I agree with all the council members. I think we should have our arms wide open, but our eyes wide open, too. But I would definitely be in favor of taking a look at this and seeing what we can do for the whole community.
Well, I think I agree with Mr. White in terms of eyes wide open here. My concern is that there needs to be real line of authority such that the public holds accountable whoever manages the pool. And if the city is running it, it's going to be held accountable, and my concern would be twofold. One is that there is complete and full cost recovery, so there's no drain on our resources whatsoever. And secondly, that we can do it with our staff, and our staff is not diverted from other things they can do. And if it means more staff, that that's included in the proposal. But clearly, if we're going to do it and we have the oversight role, we need to be in a position where we exercise full fiduciary responsibility, and the public knows it. I'm not for, you know, I'm going to, I have an open mind to sort of halfway proposals each way, but in general, I'm skeptical because it often undercuts responsibility. That's my view of it. All right. Do you have enough direction?
I have plenty of direction. Thank you very much.
Okay. The next item is, the next item is in wonderful accounting language, but has a large import for us. Consideration and proposed approval of a resolution authorizing a transfer of $526,000 from the City of St. Helena's General Fund Unassigned Reserve to the Measure A Fund to cover the fiscal year 1415 state revolving fund loan payment. City manager can speak to that, please.
Thank you very much. So we've talked a little bit, a couple of times, in different scenarios or different situations about the state revolving fund. And so back in 2008, the city borrowed 9.1 million as part of its flood control project from the state of California and what we refer to as a state revolving fund payment. I talked about these both in the long-range financial forecast presentation that I made along with the budget presentation for 1516. And so the city's principal and interest payments for that loan, which continue through 2028, are currently estimated at $526,000 a year. What I had been told was to be sure to include it in the 1516 budget, which is why I highlighted that in the long-range financial plan forecast, because it made such a big jump in our expenditures. We're looking at basically a 5% jump in expenditures. So I had noted that in the long-range financial forecast to say my expenditures were based on the 1415 budget with no additional changes in expenditures, but I did note that that additional payment of 500, I had said 28 at the time, was now included starting 1516 and carrying through the general, through the period, the 10-year period of the general plan, because we had to cover it, we believed we had to cover it with general fund monies. So in preparing the budget, one of the things we do is we make sure all our funds are balanced, and at the back of the budget document from last year, you'll see that each fund has an accounting of its expenditures and its fund balance. And so last Thursday, we identified that, in fact, the 1415 payment had been made by Measure A funds. But another discussion we've been having was about the $1.9 million, and that we had to transfer 1.6 out of the general fund in 1314 to cover that refund of FEMA because we couldn't draw down on the Measure A funds. Well, if you look in the 1314, if you look in the 1415 budget, the staff at the time had estimated that $2.5 million would be drawn down from Measure A, and that would cover the $1.9 million refund, as well as the half million, the $526 payment for the state revolving fund. Since that drawdown was denied, and the county controller took exception to that, and I apologize if I used the wrong word, when we contacted her, she said we weren't eligible for a drawdown because at this point in our Measure A funds, the county controller, who is the controlling, the controller for the authority that oversees the Measure A funds, has the right to withhold the monies to pay back the bonds that they issued on our behalf. So we have two separate sets, we have two separate loans. One we did on our own with the state, the other one, the county, the flood control agency did on our behalf. And so they have the right now, towards the end of Measure A, to withhold that money to ensure they have full payment of principal and interest of the bonds they floated on behalf of St. Helena. And so we went to do the drawdown, you can say denied, rejected, whatever word you want to say, we're not eligible at this time to draw down Measure A money. And therefore, we need to cover this payment, which was booked, which an accountant can do. You can book it to the fund, assuming revenue was going to come in to cover the payment. They booked it to the Measure A fund. The revenue has not come in and won't come in in 1415, and therefore, we have to cover that expenditure through the general fund. And so what I'm asking from the council today is to move $526,000 from the unassigned general fund reserve into the Measure A account to cover this payment.
And the Measure A account here is the city's Measure A account?
That's correct. Thank you for the clarification.
All right. And the discovery was last Tuesday?
Yes, it was. And I wrote the staff report, and so it's public and quickly understood and transparent, became public on Thursday, and we're discussing it today.
All right. Are there any initial questions of the city manager here?
I guess, you know, in the past, we had been assured through some modeling that was done that was so, so long as the economy stayed as robust as it was a year ago, through the duration of Measure A, term of these bonds, there'd be plenty of cash to ensure full repayment of the bonds. We'd have to have, I think it was, I want to say like an 18% dip in overall revenue within the city to run into an issue where we had an obligation beyond what was repaid through sales tax. And I guess I'm wondering, is there a mechanism or a procedure we can go through to show this agency that oversees the bonds to make sure they're trued up, that we are good and we're covered and will be fine such that we can get earlier release of these funds? So I look at, you know, floating a bond for the benefit of doing things that we've done and not being able to actually access those, the bond funds, it just doesn't compute to me. What's the point if we can't actually use the funds?
Well, they're not bond funds, there's the sales tax from Measure A. That's what we're seeking to use to cover these payments. And I discussed that on May 11th with the budget presentation was, one of the ways to help reduce our million-dollar shortfall was to request from that JPA that the City of St. Helena be allowed to do a drawdown prior to the 5.2 million being totally collected, knowing full well exactly what you said. It would take a massive recession not to accumulate the 5.2 million. So we're anticipating several million beyond the 5.2 will be available to St. Helena for flood control-related expenses after 2016. The challenge is, we haven't gotten any traction, and we're trying, we're still going to write a letter, but we've basically gotten no traction from those who are in authority to be able to do that. So it doesn't mean I won't stop trying, but the request has not been well received.
Do you have any sense for, for example, the amount of sales tax that accrued to our Measure A account in the current fiscal year?
Well, it should be around the 1 million mark, because it's a half-cent sales tax, and we bring in about 2 million in sales tax. So it should be about, each year, it should be about a million.
Through the chair, I'm curious as to what the reasons were that Ms. McCrory left you with in terms of why the money had to be paid out of the general fund for the fiscal year 2015, 2016. Was there an explanation as to that account versus the Measure A account? What was going on at that point?
Because I think by 1516, there was an understanding that there would be a stop basically placed on the Measure A funds to ensure that adequate funds were retained to pay back the bonds. So the understanding was that was going to happen in 1516, but monies would still be available in 1415.
Okay. And so are we precluded, even if we get to that 5.2 million dollar level, are we precluded from using those monies for paying back the loan or other, I consider that a flood control or flood project?
No, it's a very appropriate use. We just need access.
How much do we have in the fund now, the Measure A fund? And how long will it take us to get to about 5.2 million?
So the Measure A fund with the JPA has about 4.5 million in it. We need to get to 5.2. We anticipate that we'll reach that in 1516, and once we reach that, then we can do the drawdown. The question is, when? Is it December? Is it March? Is it June? We just don't know. And at this point, there isn't, it's an estimate, and so the agency is not willing to allow us to do a drawdown on an estimate.
So is it the total?
Wait, one at a time, please.
Is it the total fund of the JPA or just our account that has to be 5.2 million?
For St. Helena.
Our account? Okay.
Correct.
Sorry.
In the drawdown, what amount is that? Is it above and beyond?
It is. Is it above and beyond, I'll get closer, is it above and beyond the 5.2? Or is it the totality of that 5? What are we allowed to draw down once we've hit that 5.2? Why is 5.2 a magic number? Are they just tracking to make sure we stay on pace? I mean, what's really...
The 5.2 is to pay back the bonds, the debt that the JPA issued on St. Helena's behalf. So that's what we owe on those, on that debt. We have another debt with the state, which is the state revolving fund payment. So we have these two debts going at the same time, and it's very appropriate to use the Measure A monies to pay the state revolving fund debt. So what we owe, what's estimated that we owe in our remaining debt from the JPA is 5.2 million. And so they, by contract, and we've confirmed this, have the right to withhold that money as Measure A comes to an end, to be sure that adequate funds are withheld so that debt can be fully paid off and the JPA isn't liable.
But does that mean that our drawdown, if we have a dollar over 5.2, we can draw that dollar?
Mm-hmm.
Once we've paid the 5.2 back in full?
I assume so. I mean, I don't know if you do it in $100 increments or half mil, but yes, basically once we reach the 5.2, then the city can request a drawdown.
Okay. Still not clear. Once we reach the 5.2, is it the amount above and beyond that 5.2 that therefore has to come in in the form of sales tax, which will still take time?
Correct.
It's not like we can draw down against that 5.2 or any amount. It's whatever action's coming in day by day.
Yes.
Above the 5.2.
That is correct.
And do you recall when Measure T expires? Is it at the end of the 2017, 2018 fiscal year, 2018, 2019 fiscal year?
That's when it starts.
They...
I'm sorry, measure...
Measure A stops in 2018, and Measure starts, Measure T starts basically immediately. They replace each other.
Yeah, I understand that, but is it a year end or is it the end of a...
I don't remember. I don't recall.
Okay, that's a detail. Okay.
And so one last question. There was an understanding that in 014, 015, this 500,000 and change could be funded out of Measure A. There's a technicality that is saying, no, it can't be, you've got to take it out of your general fund.
That's correct.
Right? And we don't know who could perhaps weigh that technicality? We're still looking into that?
We're trying, but at this point, it has not been well received, but we will continue to try.
The Measure A authority, to my understanding, is the County Board of Supervisors.
Okay.
So they have many different hats, as I've found out, and Measure A is one of them. And apparently, that's fairly typical in smaller counties where authorities are composed of boards of supervisors. All right. In any event, with respect to this specific action, it's clearly required, and so absent further discussion, the chair would entertain a motion to...
Should we open it up to the public?
Oh, I think I did. And it was, I did, and I closed it.
Okay.
Yeah. So...
I guess, this is another, a big item to me, and if there's some uncertainty and there is some discussion that could occur at a higher level to perhaps make it such that this could be booked against Measure A, it would set us back 500,000 through 2018, another 500,000 we need to raise. I mean, do we want to just book it against our general fund just yet, or do we want to continue trying before we make that decision? Is there some clock or meter that's ticking here? I know the budget.
Year end. I have to close, well, I have to close 1415, and 1415 cannot close with a negative fund balance on a fund like that in our own books. So there's no way for me in the weeks ahead to be able to resolve this with the JPA. I already have direction from you from May 11th to pursue this and try to draw down. Now, at the time, we thought that was going to be 1516. We didn't realize 1415 was going to come as well. So I'm not giving up. I'm just saying, to this point, it hasn't been well received, and I think it's basically impossible to get it done before June 30th. We have a tremendous amount of work to do, and so even if I get it, if it happens and we get it in July or August, it just gets booked back to general fund, and there's really, it just goes back to where we took it. So I just, I can't imagine getting it all done before June 30th.
My concern is, once you've, we've booked it to the general fund, you know, problem solved, and it gets forgotten about, not by us, but by someone else who might be able to help make an exception.
But when we, when we can, I mean, when we do get to 5.2 in our reserve and we can pay back the loan, then anything in excess, we can take back and pay against what we've drawn from the general fund? Is that correct?
Right. That would be correct. So we could take back, you can put 528,000, 26,000 back in your general fund reserve and reestablish that at the 25%. You can make the payment of the 1516, which you'll have made from the general fund as well, and through 2018, you'll be able to make the payment using Measure A funds. Absolutely. So that would be the first thing we do, is start to repay ourselves.
Right. Okay.
And then be able to make the payments.
So it's not we're precluded from putting that money back into our general fund that we've put towards the Measure A?
Unless council directs otherwise, that would be my intent, would be to draw down on the monies as soon as possible and put it back in the general fund.
It's really a timing issue.
It's an unfortunate timing. It's...
Well, it's a timing issue, but it's also more than a timing issue because it seems to me that the quantity of sales tax that we can expect to come in, while at the end will cover the current fiscal year, is we're going to come up short in forthcoming fiscal years. So it's more than just a timing issue, as I see it. It's a very serious liability to the, long-run liability to the city, and that's what I got out of the long-range forecast as well. Now, let me also reiterate what the city manager said, and I'm satisfied myself as mayor that we have undertaken to approach the powers that be in an effort to see what can be done to ease our, to ease what you characterize as the current timing issue, and we'll keep working at it. But at the same time, as the city manager points out, the authority is acting pursuant to a clear provision in the JPA, and so you can perhaps characterize it as a technical provision, but the reality is to me, is that they're exercising an appropriate contract, right? And we're in a position of sort of asking them to be lenient, and the question is whether they will be, and it may be that we're faced with very steely-eyed people at the county level.
Is it helpful at all for any of us as council members to reach out to any of the powers that be about this issue?
After the earlier training, as long as you... After the earlier training, as long as you don't violate the Brown Act. Is that good?
And we have lots of citizens in St. Helena that can do the same. So I move to authorize the transfer.
Ms. Black?
Vice Mayor White?
Yes.
Councilmember Kroll?
Yes.
Doring?
Yes.
Pitts?
Yes.
Mayor Galbraith?
Yes. All right, next item. I think we hear from a new person. Consideration of a letter of support for grant application in the amount of 399,000 for the California Alternative Transportation Program for new sidewalk and crosswalk construction.
Tracy, before you start, I, I have to announce that I should recuse myself on this item because I'm within about 500 to 700 feet of the RLS school. I live on Spring Mountain Court. It's probably a close enough call for me. Sorry to miss your first big meeting. So I'm going to step out.
You know what? And I wonder if-
I'm going to check.
I'm within so many feet of Hunt Avenue, which is the next street over from Charles. So is everybody going to leave now?
I can't believe I might be the only person not conflicted out. Good. We need one more, though. Or at least we'll have to seek advice from the city attorney here. He has to think hard on this one. If you need a recess, let me know.
May I begin?
No, please. We're waiting to see if anybody else has to recuse himself or herself.
I think I'm okay.
Mr. Pitts has concluded that he's not in FPPC purgatory, so maybe we're okay.
Okay, in the distance.
Okay. Thank you very much, Greg, for checking out. Appreciate it. Yes, Ms. Perkowski?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I stand before you tonight, seeking your support of a sidewalk construction project, which is being submitted to the Alternative Transportation Program grant. A little bit of background for you. The ATP grant has 380 million dollars available statewide during this cycle, which is the second cycle of the grant. About half of that is available competitively statewide. And the remaining half is divided up for smaller regional competitions, disadvantaged communities, as well as smaller rural communities. The application is due next week, June 1st, so time is of the essence here. The ATP program was created in 2013. And it's a combination of other grants and federal funding sources that you may have heard of before. The Federal Transportation Equity Act, T Act, otherwise known as MAP-21, ICE-T, Safety, Safety Lou, all of those great acronyms. The Bicycle Transportation Account and the California Safe Routes to School Program. Generally speaking, the ATP grant funds infrastructure and/or encouragement activities for bicyclists and pedestrians to increase safety or mobility and reduce obesity or greenhouse gas emissions. So the project that the city is looking at submitting is basically new sidewalk construction in two separate locations. The first one here is the sidewalk and connector construction at Hunt Avenue. It's the construction of new sidewalks that also includes curb and gutter from Montevista to Grove, as well as from Montevista to June Lane. There's a small connector path that runs right along the ETS Laboratories from Hunt Avenue down to Adams Street, and that's also included in this project. We're going to be converting that into a Class 1 bike lane and reducing some of the vegetation and adding some signage, as well as installing a mid-block crosswalk. It's a crosswalk painted not at an intersection. We're also going to be upgrading some of the curbs and the ramps. Some better pictures for you. So you'll see the one that's labeled Connector Entrance and Mid-Block Crosswalk. I highlight that because it's rather hard to tell where the connector entrance or exit is. And so we'll be putting a mid-block crosswalk to increase safety, as well as highlight this great little connector path. And you'll see that right now, the connector path is dirt. And that's neither ADA accessible and also can just inhibit transportation. So we're looking to upgrade that to, to concrete. The second part of the project, and the reason why we're adding the additional sidewalk construction at the middle school, is because this grant requires a $250,000 minimum application. We need both of these sidewalk projects together in order to meet that minimum threshold. So there are no sidewalks actually on the streets adjacent to the Robert Louis Stevenson Middle School. So we're going to be installing new sidewalks along Hillview, Spring Mountain, and Elmhurst. And we are going to be preserving the trees that are also around the middle school area. And this is one of my favorite pictures that I got the opportunity to go out and, and take. This is right along RLS Middle School. And you'll notice that there's the ADA curb ramp up and then the sidewalk, but it heads straight into dirt. And so this is a, a problem for anyone who might have limited mobility, as well as, you know, a mom pushing a stroller. She's going to have a hard time going on that dirt, especially during the rain. On a side note, I noticed when we were out doing pedestrian and bike counts, and I'll talk about that in, in just a second. There's a view that says if you have sidewalk, if you have sidewalks, people perceive that as being safer. When I was out doing the counts, I really noticed that it was true. I watched people cross in the middle of the road and jaywalk to get to the other side of the street on Hunt Avenue to get to the sidewalks. It's a little bit surprising to me. I didn't necessarily believe that to be true, but it is. So you can see how adding sidewalks here would be a great benefit to both the schoolchildren, as well as the people who live in the neighborhood. One of the key parts of the ATP grant is the importance of community support. So I'd like to highlight that this project has been reviewed by the Alternative Transportation Commission, the St. Helena Unified School District, and the RLS Middle School Parent Group. And they all came back with formal support and approved of the project. We're also going to be able to highlight in the application, we had an absolutely awesome group of volunteers who came out and helped us do pedestrian and bicycle counts. So we'll be able to highlight that as well. One area where support is still needed, and I would appreciate any of your help if that's possible, is from the Napa County Transportation and Planning Agency. Particularly if our grant is not funded during the first statewide application, regional support is required. And right now, they're bulking a little bit at supporting our project. So I just want to say a huge thank you to our volunteers. Community support is so important, not only just in terms of process for the grant, but I also just want to give a huge heartfelt thank you to everyone who donated their time on a Tuesday morning, a Thursday morning, and a Saturday midday, including some time for training. I really, I can't thank you enough.
Notice the person with the coffee cup.
So lastly, I'm here tonight asking for a letter of support. City council support is required for the application. I attached a draft letter to your staff report in your packet. You can either accept that is, as is, you can request changes, or there is another option there, which I hope you don't exercise, which is to not give me a letter of support. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Are they ready?
Why is NCTPA bulking?
They have specific projects that they would like to fund, most notably the Vine Trail. And so they are hesitant to be giving support to some of the projects that are put forth by the smaller communities.
They view these projects in competition with one another?
That's correct.
It is, yeah.
We should be partners and working together.
Isn't the connection behind ETS over to Hunt and then presumably gets you down to Star? I mean, I think that's one of the potential routes we had that Vine Trail users could follow through St. Helena.
You are correct, and that is one of the reasons why the Public Works Director and myself recommended this project and moved forward for the ATP. And that is one of the things that will be highlighted in our grant application and one thing that we have discussed with the Transportation and Planning Agency. And they're still making the decision on whether or not they will support our project.
It's unfortunate.
Any further initial questions of staff? Any public comment? You, you could take a seat for just a moment. You need to identify yourself unless you wish to be anonymous.
Wish to be anonymous.
But you're not allowed to be anonymous.
I'm Bobby Monet, and I'm speaking as a citizen. I'm just wondering, if it were, if the grant is accepted, then who, then you, then you contract it out? Or who, how do you, how does the construction happen? Who does that?
Okay. Is there going to be any other public comment? All right, Ms. Monet, why don't you sit down? We'll let Ms. Perkowski respond.
Sure. She inquired if we receive the grant, how is the actual construction completed? Is that done in-house or do we use a construction firm? It would not come before the planning commission.
No, it would be a completed grant at that point, sure.
So this is a competitively bid project. So the city would put together plans and specifications, distribute that out to the construction community, and go with the lowest responsive, responsible bidder.
Okay, thank you. Any, any further questions? A terrific first presentation. We hope for many more. And we appreciate the effort that you put into this for sure, on such short notice. Any further council discussion?
I think we should give it our full support.
Yeah, and, and look, I think it's 0.1% of the total grant amount that's out there. And while in general, I do think that trying to coordinate with the Vine Trail and identify legs where we can benefit, they can benefit, we're not competing, is probably a good practice in general. This is, it's nothing, and this is, this is important to these neighborhoods. And so I don't think we can put everything on hold while stretches of the Vine Trail are being done, not through St. Helena right now, but, but it will happen. But we have certain things we, we have to do. And so I do believe that coordination is important. This, this has to get done, has to get done, and I'm in full support of it.
Yeah, I obviously am full support of it too. Councilmember White is the vice chair of the NCTPA. Maybe, or maybe not, he can pursue the NCTPA. I'm also a board member, and I'm certainly going to do what I can to bring the board of the NCTPA around if, if, if staff continues to balk at this. This is hugely important to St. Helena, and I agree with Councilmember Pitts's financial analysis. So at this point, I would entertain a motion to approve the letter.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Black?
Councilmember Pitts?
Yes.
Kroll?
Yes.
Mayor Galbraith?
Emphatically, yes. Okay, let's see if we can reclaim our missing council members. Okay. Let's wait for the city manager. We're going to wait for just a couple minutes, see if we, see if our city manager returns. No yawning, Ms. Monet. Okay, this takes us to item 20 on our agenda. Consideration and proposed adoption of the city's housing element update 2015-2023, including the needs assessment and goals and policies document. The adequacy of a negative declaration will also be considered. And Mr. Carnegie, you're on.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Let me start out here quickly by talking a little bit about the housing element itself in the update process. As you're aware, housing element is part of the city's general plan. State law requires periodic updates of the housing element, unlike other parts of the general plan. And just for the record, this is the fifth update cycle as mandated by the state. Essentially, how it works is the state sets a specific housing allocation. Actually, HCD does. The Department of Housing and Community Development at the state level sets a housing allocation for each region of the state. And this is what's referred to as the RENA number. And then it's up to the regional authority within that region to allocate those numbers to specific communities. And this update cycle, it's, the dynamic in terms of doing that allocation focused significantly on placing the housing near job centers that had the effect of significantly lowering the RENA number for the city of St. Helena. Essentially, and it's a dramatic reduction in the last housing element cycle, the housing element that the city approved back in 2009. The, the number was, the RENA number was 121 units. And for this cycle, the number is 31 units. So that's clearly a, a big reduction. In terms of the housing element itself, it really consists of two components, as noted in the agenda. One is a needs assessment, then the goals and policy document. Needs assessment, its function really is to provide information both to the community and prospective developers or housing builders and decision makers about housing in St. Helena, about price of housing availability, et cetera. And then there's the goals and policies document, which is really more the meat of the housing element. And in essence, what that document is, is the specific steps the city is intending to take to achieve the housing goals, and in this case, it's the 31 units. And then it is important to note that the state does recognize that the city is per se not in the business of building housing. So the, the burden on the housing element is to demonstrate that there's the opportunity, based on the number of sites and density allowed on the sites, et cetera, for that housing to be built and not, not that the city is required to build a housing. In terms of the process within St. Helena itself, the process was initiated last year toward the end of April with a workshop. The staff report contains a detailed chronology of events. The bulk of the time between the, the April workshop and the end of the year, end of 2014, was to do a whole number of updates to the city's zoning ordinance to comply with various state law requirements. There also were workshops on the housing element. The commission and council held workshops in February of this year. And, and more recently, the commission had another housing element workshop in April of, of this year, just last month. We, the city did receive, we submitted the housing element, which went to council on February 24th. And council direction was to submit that housing element to the, to HCD. And we did submit it. And we, at the end of April, and the letters included in the council packet, received a letter from HCD essentially saying that the state approves or authorize, or essentially approves the content of the housing element. The actual formal approval would occur after council action to act on the housing element, which is the subject of the hearing tonight. And Planning Commission did review the housing element and on May 5th, recommended the council approve it, along with the NEGDEC, by a 5-0 vote. I'd just like to talk about a few of the, the key changes to the housing element and then turn it over to the city's consultant to make a few remarks. But as noted in the staff report, tried to facilitate comparisons and seeing what the various changes are by highlighting text. And so really, from, from a council perspective, the, the text, I believe it's in blue, that's in the housing element, highlights the changes that occurred since council last saw this on February 24th and the hearing here tonight. The bulk of those changes, well, pretty much all of them related to working with HCD and negotiating with them as to various- as to various wording changes. And frankly, I think that the changes as a whole resulted in a stronger, better housing element. And two of the more notable changes I'd just like to touch on, and then our consultant's gonna talk about others. But the first one is obvious, and I already mentioned it, but is the reduction in the target number from the last time around, 121 to 31. This doesn't mean, obviously, that the city only needs to do 31. What it does, though, is give the city flexibility instead of the city having to make some number. I think it's a number that's, you know, that definitely is achievable. But it gives us flexibility in terms of not being, you know, forced or mandated to meet a higher number. The city can really, in a lot of ways, meet a number that fits its needs and goals and abilities. And the other item that's worth noting relates to the city, excuse me, the city council workshop on the general plan that occurred back in April. And as council will recall, the direction from council was to come up with a new land use designation to essentially fit in between the current low density and the medium density. As was noted, the medium density designation is definitely on the high side at 16 units an acre. And we worked with HCD to essentially work with them, and they understood, you know, the city's logic. And essentially, they authorized or agreed to support such a change so that the city's zoning would be a much better fit in terms of the existing land use in the single-family neighborhoods of the city. And it really avoided a potential problem, given the issue of buy-right housing, which could have been problematic in the city's single-family neighborhoods if you ended up with multiple family, up to 16 units an acre, being buy-right. At any rate, we were able to work with HCD staff and come up with their concurrence, essentially based on council direction from that general plan workshop. So what I'd like to do now is just turn it over to Christine O'Rourke, who'll touch on some of the changes in the housing element. Like to note, we did receive late this afternoon, I believe council has a copy of it, a letter from Mr. Graeble with a number of comments on the housing element. And once Christine does her presentation, be happy to answer any questions. Staff's recommending approval of the resolution and, you know, for the housing element and also with the NECDAC, so.
All right, Ms. O'Rourke.
Thank you very much, Victor.
Glad to see you back.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. Victor did a great job of kind of giving all of the background. So I'll just, as he said, I'll just touch on some of the changes that were made in response to HCD comments. And so in the housing needs assessment, most of the changes there were really fairly minor in nature. They were really to clarify some of the language and also to clarify some existing policies and regulations. We also, we added some information on disabled services, services available to disabled people. We also added some estimates on the farmworker housing population, farmworker population in St. Helena. Probably the most significant change that was made to the housing needs assessment was a discussion on page 148 that talks about the zoning definition of a family. This St. Helena's zoning definition for a family says that the family is any number of persons related by blood, marriage, or legal adoption, or a nuclear family identified by extended cohabitation, or a group not exceeding five persons whose interpersonal relationships relating to shared household expenses, duties, and private lives are indistinguishable from groups listed in subsections 1 and 2 above. Essentially, California courts have invalidated these kind of similar definitions of a family. It's illegal to identify a family either by referring to a family by two or more persons related by blood, marriage, or adoption, or by identifying a family as a group of a certain number of people who are not related, who may be unrelated, but who are living together. So in light of that, we've added a program to the housing policy document, program HE1K, which says that the city will update the definition of a family. And family would be defined as one or more persons living together as a single housekeeping unit in a dwelling unit. So the important thing here is that the definition should not distinguish between related or unrelated people. And also that it should not impose a numerical limit on the number of people that may constitute a family. So that was the most significant change made to the housing needs assessment. In respect to the goals, policies, and eight-year action plan, we, most of that language there also, there were a lot of minor changes. HCD asked that we strengthen the program language. And really what that means is that where we had said perhaps the council will consider an ordinance to XYZ, it now says the council will consider and adopt as appropriate an ordinance to. So HCD feels that that's a stronger language. We also added some quantified objectives for specific housing units that would be tied to specific programs. And then we added some targets for conservation and preservation of housing units. So all of those are really pretty, pretty minor changes. As Victor mentioned, we did make some significant changes, however, to program HE1D, which is on page 9. And this is addressing the multi, the medium density sites and the requirement to remove the conditional use permit on high-density sites. But for medium-density sites, it's been changed so that the city will need to remove the conditional use permit for all of the medium-density sites, and there's seven of them, in table 42 in the key housing opportunity sites, as well as the high-density sites, by May of next year. And then, and then the city's going to evaluate the remaining parcels that are in the medium-density district. And then if there are any, after you go through this process of identifying a lower-density zone for some of those properties, if there are any left in this medium-density zoning district, then to go back and remove the conditional use permit for those properties as well. So that's what the new language for that program says. So as Victor mentioned, tonight, we are requesting that the council consider adopting the housing element and also approving the negative declaration. The negative declaration essentially found that there were no significant, potential for significant impacts on the environment from the housing element. That's really because the housing element is a policy-level document. And there's really not many changes that we're proposing from the last, from the 2009 document. One other thing I forgot to mention is that when the Planning Commission reviewed the housing element, they did, just a couple of weeks ago, they did recommend that the council approve the housing element. But they wanted the council to consider moving the site, the Adams Street, and the site next to the library, off of the other underutilized sites and moving it to the key housing opportunity sites, which is table 42. So the resolution does say that that change will be made, if that's something that you'd like to approve after... We can do that, we can make that minor change after the housing element's adopted. So that's one thing for, up for discussion. And I believe that's everything. So I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Are there any initial questions of either Mr. Carneglia or Ms. O'Rourke?
Can you better explain the contemplated, I guess, new zoning district that would be created as part of this shift? And it seemed to me that we'd want to understand the number of sites that would remain in medium and be subject to buy-right, and where they're located and what the current conditions are?
Okay, at this point, for disclaimer, we haven't gotten through the full exercise, so I can't say exactly. The dilemma or issue really is currently the designation is low-density, which essentially is, you know, 0 to 4. And then medium-density is 4.1, that jumps all the way to 16 units an acre, which essentially at 16, you're looking at attached housing, condominiums, and, you know, variety of, you know, common wall housing, et cetera. The medium-density zone applies to pretty much all the city's existing single-family neighborhoods, or at least, you know, 80% of them. So the idea would be to come up with a new, both general plan and zoning category. You might, we might call it medium-low or something like that, that would kind of nest or fit in there between those two designations. So it may have go from four to, let's say, eight units an acre. And then with the medium, going from eight to 16. So that's the intent. And then the other thing we need to be cognizant of is the buy-right issue, as discussed, would be applicable to the medium-density and not to this new category that we're looking at. So we need to look at the sites. I mean, presumably, the sites we leave medium-density are ones that are closer into the downtown and that clearly would make more sense for, you know, a higher-density range.
So, okay, and that, I think that answers my question and concern, and this is something I've studied. But where that threshold is, whether it's, you know, 4.1 to 8 or 10, where that cutoff is could affect certain people in certain neighborhoods. And that, there will be extensive analysis to figure out where will that cutoff lie?
Right. I mean, based on the analysis that we've done to date, if anything, the problem's on the lower end of the range. In other words, there's existing housing that's currently below the four units an acre. There's very little that goes anywhere above 10. And so it looks like it would be a pretty clean fit over most neighborhoods. That would change a bit, is get a bit closer to either the downtown or closer to a couple of the high-density areas. But it's a real valid concern, one that we're gonna have to be very cognizant of.
Right.
Plenty of opportunity for Planning Commission consideration first. Any other initial questions? All right, thank you very much, Ms. O'Rourke. You can take a seat, and we'll see whether there's any public comment. Mr. Graeble?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry for...
Why don't you introduce yourself first, please?
David Graeble, here on behalf of Latinos Unidos, Del Valle de Napa y Solano, and some other low-income families that are in need of affordable housing in this area. And we submitted comments back in February to the draft that went to HCD. There were some changes made, some positive changes were made after that. I don't know if it was HCD that prompted, I don't know how they, who prompted them, but changes were made, and thank you for that. But there's still a lot of problems with your housing element. And the letter we have sent today, I'm sorry, I didn't give your city attorney a copy. I sent everybody else. And I'll try to zip through them pretty quickly. Farmworker housing, big problem in all, the whole county, but especially in our county where you got most of the farmworker employment. And the state law has some specific requirements around farmworker housing analyses and programs to address it. We don't think the housing element that you're looking at now meets those requirements. We don't have an analysis of the need here. We got figures for the number of farmworkers ranging from 10,000 to 100. And the city kind of arbitrarily said, "Well, there are 700 farmworker housing jobs in St. Helena, so that's the number we're gonna go with." And I don't know where that came from. Maybe your consultant can enlighten about that. But then there's no, no... You don't provide any programs to address any of that need. So, you know, you have 700, whether it's 700 or 7,000, there's, you gotta figure out how you're gonna provide some housing. Not housing for every one of them. Some of them already have housing. But you gotta, you gotta analyze the need, the unmet need for farmworker housing. That's not done, and that's a serious problem. There's some other ones. The ABAG numbers are crazy. No housing was built anywhere in ABAG in the 2009 to 2014 planning period because the economy tanked. But why then, the need didn't tank? Why does ABAG cut St. Helena's numbers from 130 or so down to 31? It's bizarre, makes no sense. And we don't think, the city should look at those. And I don't think you have. I think, if I may have about one more minute.
One more minute, sure.
You don't have to... You have identified sites for more than 31 units. Thank you. But I don't think you're close to identifying sites for farmworker housing needs or other low-income housing needs. There's, you gotta make your own determination of what your housing needs are. I want to point out paragraph 2, in my haste to get this thing over to you, footnote 2, it doesn't make any sense. I know some of you may think nothing makes sense in this letter. But it's supposed to say, "The city's need was determined by ABAG to be 60% less than its prior RENA, though employment in St. Helena in the area has increased and no housing has been built." I'm sorry for that error. There's other issues that we point out in this letter. Take, take your time. It's not gonna hurt to miss that deadline of May 31st. It just means you gotta take another look at it in four years. And if you're doing okay, if you got a good housing element, that's fine, you're gonna be, you're gonna be in good shape. If you don't have a good housing element, you're gonna, you're gonna be in trouble whether it's a four-year period or eight-year period. People are gonna be yelling about, they don't have any housing. So thank you very much. Take a look at it. You got a great city attorney. You got a great new planning director from city near and dear to my heart. And they do a good job with affordable housing over there. So thank you again.
Thank you very much, Mr. Graeble. Is there any other public comment? All right, I'm gonna close the public comment and invite further. Is there any further comment from staff, particularly in response to any of the points that Mr. Graeble made?
Well, you know, Christine can jump in too. And we did just receive this letter or so. But on the issue of farmworker housing, I mean, essentially, the city went by the best information we had available in terms of, in order to estimate the number of farmworkers in the city. We simply relied on the best data that we had. The city did go through and modify its ordinance to allow farmworker housing in the ag zones and a couple of the other zones by right. And if you look within the housing element, there are a number of policies that specifically encourage and provide some tools in terms of facilitating farmworker housing. The one that comes to mind is HE4I in the goals and policy document. So I, you know, it definitely is compared to the previous housing element. I feel the city is aware of the issue. We talked it over with HCD, and HCD staff was satisfied with what we're proposing. So from a staff perspective, we feel like that we're definitely addressing the issue. In terms of the site inventory, it really kind of is what it is. They assigned us that many numbers. And as noted, and as Mr. Graeble noted, the sites themselves can deliver at the low end from anyone from 61 to 100-plus units. This council is also where there is the Calderon agreement, which stands separate from the housing element. And that has specific unit totals that must also be met. So clearly, the city's intent is to develop as much as feasible. I don't think folks are gonna feel that they're constrained by the number, but it does give the city some flexibility. And in, just looking at the letter here, there's a question about the use of second units and whether or not they should be used for, accounted for affordable housing. The fact is that HCD staff is, and we raised and discussed this issue with them, they're very supportive of second units in some communities, frankly. they're very supportive of second units, and some communities, frankly, I believe it was Piedmont, they meet pretty much their entire arena number based on second units. Um, so the, um, the, the city feels, staff feels comfortable with the language in there on second units, and as an, as an aside, the Calderon Agreement has language which prohibits second units from counting to meet those affordable housing goals. So from a practical standpoint, uh, given the overlap with the Calderon Agreement, we're not gonna be looking at second units. Um, so that, those are responses that come to mind. Christine, anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, I, um, I would also just note that, uh, again, we did talk to HCD, and, uh, HCD staff was in contact also with Mr. Gate, Graeble. So they were, um, aware of his concern, so we worked with them to kind of add some more estimates of the farmworker housing population. They did provide us with some data, and we use that data here in the document. We also made some changes to program HE four-I, which just talks a little more, with more specificity about what the city will do to reach out to farmworkers, um, and to, to help to develop affordable housing for, for, uh, for farmworkers. So it says that the city will reach out to affordable housing developers to support regional and city efforts to develop farmworker housing, including assisting with financing or applications, incentives, and concessions, expedited review, or other strategies to encourage the development of housing for farmworkers. So, uh, HCD was satisfied with the changes that we made and how we addressed the farmworker housing issue and the second unit issues, and, and all the other issues that, um, Mr. Graeble raised, so.
All right. Are there any, uh, council comments, including with respect to the Adams Street property, which we were specifically asked to address? Ms. Crowell, you wanna go first?
I'm, yeah, me too.
Okay.
Um, since I've, feel like I've been discussing the Adams Street parcel for years now. Um, you know, and, and in the past, I, I have definitely indicated that I am not opposed to housing on the Adams Street parcel. Um, however, I do not believe it should be one of the sites any, at this time. Um, the Adams Street parcel is, um, something that I should, think should be conceptually developed, um, as a whole and not piecemeal. And I think that, um, while I'm not opposed to seeing housing on it, um, especially in a mixed-use situation, I just don't think that we should, um, limit ourselves at this time.
All right, Mr. Pitts?
Um, I guess I'll comment on Adams Street. We have, in my count, we've got like, what, two-hundred-and-forty opportunity site units?
It's a bit less than that.
A bit less.
I think it's...
It's two-twenty-six.
Mostly medium and high-density could be. Check real quick.
My point is, we've got, what, eight or nine times?
We've got a lot.
Two-hundred-and-forty-two, if you, for medium and high-density, yes.
That's far off. So I think we're, we've got a good multiple, right? I think they like to see two or three, and we've got eight or nine times. I don't see any need to add, um, an additional site. Again, I, I would express what Councilmember Crowell stated, which is I'm not opposed to, uh, some quantity, but that's a, that's a big project. Um, who knows what we're going to potentially do with that land at this point, and I wouldn't want to necessarily, um, I, A, I also don't, this has been approved, I wanna get it done, move on, and stop spending any time or resources on it unless it's absolutely necessary, from a legal standpoint, and I don't see that as, we've got a lot of other things to do, we've got budget constraints, and let's get it done, move on.
Mr. Doring?
Well, with respect to the issue at hand, the Adams Street property, I think it, that it should be considered an opportunity site because I think it's a government-owned property, and it's more, more likely, uh, to have, uh, housing developed on it, just in terms of the economics of, of the Napa Valley than a privately-owned piece of property. I think we have better chances, a better opportunity than, than the other, uh, opportunity sites that are listed. I also think that, uh, you know, it's consistent with the, with the updated general plan, as it's written right now in the visioning statement, that, that is, is, uh, referred to in that general plan, and with the community's, uh, wish that it be considered as a part of a mixed-use, uh, opportunity there. So, I wouldn't want to foreclose it, I'm open, uh, I, I'm not sure why we wouldn't want to have it on there, I don't think there is going to, that, that doesn't necessarily mean it will have to be built on there, but I, I agree with you that it's better to look at, uh, a whole property in a comprehensive manner. But I think we're gonna have a better chance to build it there than, than other places. So I would like to have it on, uh, as an opportunity site.
Mr. White?
Um, well, I think that it should be, um, left as an other, not one of our key opportunity sites. I think, I, I agree with everybody that, that we should not preclude it from, from housing. I like the idea of mixed-use housing there. Um, but I think we need to take a look at that site as, as a total project, and, and it's one of, one of the city's, um, major resources for possible future revenue, and I wouldn't want to preclude, you know, our possibility of getting more revenue into the city using that, using that site, um, as, you know, some kind of retail, some kind of revenue generation as opposed to just housing. So I would, I would, uh, not recommend it going to a key housing opportunity site.
All right, then, my thought on this is, in general, uh, as everybody knows, I'm inclined to accept the recommendation of the Planning Commission, because that's why I think we have a planning commission, and, uh, and, uh, unless their recommendation is out of line, I tend to defer to the, uh, thoughtful recommendations of our commissions. But it's pretty clear that there are three votes not to include it as, uh, an opportunity site, and I think that's, uh, the direction to staff, unless you need a formal vote.
I don't, I don't believe we need a formal vote. I, I think in the motion just, well, in the motion, I think it would be helpful to make it clear, 'cause the way the resolution is written right now, it has language just to include the Adams as, as an opportunity site.
Then the chair will entertain a motion to remove the Adams Street, uh, property from the motion.
I just want to make one fi- fi- final comment. I find it very ironic that the, the opposition to putting housing on there, uh, because it's not part of an overall project, or an overall conception, was not an objection when the council was considering a history center there as a standalone project. So I'm, I'm, I'm wondering what the change in circumstances are when that one was looked at as an isolated issue, but this one is not.
I can respond to that, and, um, I've actually met with five or six different groups about what could happen there, and what I've quickly learned is that it's gonna be a long process trying to figure out the right mix of things on, on Adams Street. I don't think it's gonna move quickly just because we own it, I think it's actually gonna take a, perhaps a longer period. But it wasn't just the, they, I think they were the group that came and said, "Hey, we're interested in doing this," and quickly we realized that there are a lot of other groups that would like to see things on that site. I think we need to listen to all of those good intentions. Um, and NIBA showed up after the fact as well, and they're interested in doing something there. Right now, I think we need to focus on bringing in revenue, and then we can figure out how to spend it. Another reason why I'm not sure anything's gonna happen anytime in the near future on Adams Street, period, but that's...
Well, okay, well, I think the chair would invite a motion not to include, uh, the Adams Street property, uh, on the, uh, in the resolution.
All right, I move approval of the housing element...
Wait, 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 I've got further comments, I want to just get rid of the Adams Street first.
Okay, I, I move to remove the Adams Street proposal from the housing element resolution.
If I could, um, just suggest a, a possible approach to that, is that it would be easy for any motion to approve to simply say, "Subject to the deletion of the language in the draft resolution..."
The difficulty with that is that, uh, if it's deleted, uh, if, if it's, if it's, if it's deleted, I might, uh, vote no, whereas if it's...
I understand.
If it's out, I'm going to vote yes, so I want to...
Then forgive the interruption, it then, and it would be appropriate to proceed that way.
My members of the council will indulge me on this one.
Yeah, good motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, roll call.
Councilmember Crowell?
Yes.
Vice Mayor White?
Yes.
Councilmember Doring?
No.
Councilmember Pitts?
Yes.
Mayor Galbraith?
No.
Okay.
I'm gonna let that happen again.
Yeah, we'll move approval.
Well, wait, wait, let me make one further comment, uh, just on the, in general, a couple of things that, uh, that had worried me in the past, uh, and I just want to point it out. Uh, the, uh, housing needs assessment is very clear, and I applaud staff for this one. Uh, it should be noted, with the exception of site seven, eight, and eleven, the property owners have not expressed interest in developing these sites at the current time. In other words, there was very clear disclosure to HCD, as far as I'm concerned, as to exactly what the status of these, uh, sites was, and, uh, HCD is okay with that, uh, so, so be it. Uh, but I appreciate the disclosure. Uh, my second comment is that if ABAG is crazy, it's above my scale, and I'm not gonna comment on that. Uh, and the third comment is that, again, I appreciate staff, I think it's pretty clear, uh, as we move forward, uh, that unless second units are restricted, uh, they will not be counted toward low or very-low income, uh, arena numbers, and I think that's clear in the documents, and again, I appreciate staff, uh, uh, in terms of what I think is, is, is clear at this point. So with those comments, uh, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the housing element.
Move approval of the housing element?
And the negative declaration.
And the negative declaration.
After, after, after your Brown Act presentation, we've remembered the negative declaration.
And for, appreciate that, and for clarification, it, the motion would be to approve the resolution before the council, subject to the change that was made by the previous motion.
That's right.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Crowell?
Yes.
Vice Mayor White?
Yes.
Councilmember Doring?
Yes.
Councilmember Pitts?
Yes.
Mayor Galbraith?
Yes. Democratic centralism has worked perfectly again. All right. Uh, I think that concludes our business, does it? Uh, and so the chair will declare the meeting adjourned. Thanks very much, everybody, appreciate it.